Welcome and good early evening and please be courteous and turn off your cell phones or silence your cell phones. I'd like to call to order this joint meeting of the Hillsburg City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency. It is March 5th, 2018 and we are now going to begin with the Pledge Allegiance. And I'd like the record to reflect that all five council members are present. And with that, I invite a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Madam Mayor, did you wish to move item three to the end of the agenda?
I could do that, yes. Thank you for reminding me, yes. So we're going to go ahead and have our council reports on matters of interest at the end of the meeting as we did last meeting, so is that acceptable?
Yes, with that change, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it clearly passes, alright. And so we're moving on to announcements and presentations. And we're going to begin with a very special presentation that might be borderline emotional, but we're going to contain ourselves because we're strong. And we're going to do an oath of office for a deputizing of a city clerk in the city of Hillsburg tonight.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, our city clerk has informed the city that she'll be retiring after the summer. And so the idea is having staff on hand who has an interest in this position promoting
And our deputy city clerk, we're just thrilled to have you.
Raina to the position of where she's being sworn in tonight will be very helpful in the
You've been with us for a while and we're really glad to have the continuity and to
transition.
have the support, so happy you're here and thank you for wanting to do the job.
Much more to come on Maria at later meetings.
So we're moving on to item B, which is Hillsburg Firefighter of the Year recognition. And I believe Chief Boaz is on the podium.
Congratulations, Raina and Maria. Nice to have you. Good evening, Mayor Manziel, members of councils. Nice to be before you again today. Jason Boaz, Fire Chief. I have a few orders of business. And the first thing I'd like to do is talk about our 2017 Firefighter of the Year. Each year, the Fire Department Command Staff, the chief officers and fire captains get together and we basically do a review of the volunteer staff or what we call the reserve staff. And we pick one individual who stands out for the year for their achievements and their dedication and their abilities. The things we look at are incident participation, for example, the number of calls they went on, the number of hours they spent training. We look at involvement in association activities, fire department activities like our pancake breakfasts, open house, things like that. And probably most importantly to me, attitude and consistency and just commitment to the community and commitment to the department. So this year, I'd like to bring up our 2017 Firefighter of the Year, Mike Jacobs. A couple of quick things about firefighter Jacobs. He's been a reserve with Hillsburg Fire since 2011. And just to recap 2017 for you, for him, he did 105 what we call Reserve Augmentation Program shifts or RAP shifts, meaning basically pulling a shift at the station with the paid staff. 105 of those, spent 134 hours on department training. Total hours worked in this, you know, including the October fires, 1,839 hours for 2017. And during that time, he ran 265 calls. And in addition to doing all that, Mike continues to take classes at Santa Rosa Junior College where he's finishing up his degree in fire technology. I think he participated in every one of the fire department events we had this year. And all that on top of working full-time as a manager at McClays in Windsor, which I know he puts a lot of hours into. Mike's just got an excellent work ethic, positive attitude, and he does live here in town with the love of his wife Jennifer, so congratulations, Mike.
I just wanted to thank the council, thank the city manager for the opportunity to be able to serve our citizens, thank the citizens as well. It's something that I do with great pride and a lot of honor. So this recognition means a lot to me. I would like to thank Chief Boaz, Chief Colister, Fire Inspector Mondahano, all our captains, Sullivan, Williams, Montani, our engineers, Potter, Albers, and Newhall, our firefighters, Crabbe and Ratto, and then all my fellow reserves for getting me to this point and helping me to continue in my skills and hone my craft, so. And I know as firefighters, we all have loved ones that mean a lot to us, friends, family, loved ones, without whom we can't do this job. It would be infinitely more difficult, if not impossible. So there's a few in the room, but I want to thank Jenny. She's put up a lot with me being gone and keeps the house going and everything, so I have a safe and living home to come home to. And I know we all have someone like that in the fire service, so just want to thank you all and it means a lot, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We're lucky to have you on the staff. The next thing I'd like to do, I'm sorry, do you want me to just move through the agenda?
Yes, please, Chief, thanks.
Next up, we're going to, we have two individuals that have completed the training for fire engineer and we would like to bring them up to do their fire engineer badge pinning. I'll explain that in a second. But if I could have Robert Morris and Alex Miller come up here? So for those of you that don't know, we have a number of ranks in the fire department. Firefighter, fire engineer, fire captain, on up. So the fire engineer is the highest rank that one of our reserve firefighters can attain. It requires a lot of extra training on top of being a firefighter. They're basically responsible for driving and operating all of the apparatus and all of the equipment, getting people safely to the scene and safely back from the scene. On fires, are responsible for water supply, pumping the fire engine, maintaining the equipment. It's a lot of extra training and a lot of extra work. And quite frankly, we don't have a lot of reserve fire engineers right now, as you'll see in my presentation, we have four, including these two. So that's kind of a testament to how much extra work it is. So very proud of you two for completing this work. First off, we have engineer Alex, Alex Miller. Just, I'm going to tell you a couple of quick things about him, just so you know who's working in your town here. Alex Miller was born and raised in Santa Rosa, in Coffee Park, actually. And he now lives in Windsor with his wife Nicole and his three kids, Dominic, Cassie, and Rayland, the six-month-old who's in the crowd here today. Alex works for the Sonoma County Department of Transportation where he's worked since 2011. He started as a volunteer when he was a senior in high school with Forestville Fire Protection District and served five, I'm sorry, he attended the Fire Academy in Chico and spent five seasons with CAL FIRE before we were lucky enough to get him on our staff. He's been a reserve with Hillsburg since 2013. And we just really value, one, the experience and the commitment, the dedication and the calm demeanor that Alex brings with him everywhere he goes. He's going to have his engineer badge pinned on him tonight by his wife Nicole. I guess we'll all introduce Robert and then we'll bring them both up, how about that? Engineer Robert Morris, he grew up in Sonora, California and has been a resident of Hillsburg since 2004. He's joined tonight by his wife Erin and his son Max. The Morris family, you probably know them, they own and operate a local pet boutique called Fido on the corner of Hillsburg Avenue and North Street. Robert has also spent the last year building an amazing new custom crush facility in Windsor called Grand Crew Custom Crush. Robert attended UC Santa Barbara where he earned a degree in mechanical engineering, which is a great asset to us at the fire department for a lot of reasons I won't go into. But he has a long lineage of firefighters with his grandfather being an Alameda County firefighter and his father being a firefighter in the air force. So Robert's been a reserve firefighter with Hillsburg Fire since 2014. Some of the things we appreciate most about Robert are his mechanical aptitude and problem-solving ability and his desire to serve his community of Hillsburg, which he has a deep love for. So tonight, Robert will be pinned by both his wife Erin and his son Max, so if your family members want to come up here. So Rayland is the newest addition to the fire department family, so I just want to thank you both and just reiterate how proud I am of you and how lucky we are in the city of Hillsburg to have you both serving in the position of engineer. You're both competent, thoughtful, and I'm really happy that you're now serving as engineer. So thank you both very much.
Yeah, so Councilman McCaffrey would like to ask a question.
Chief Boaz, how many of our engineers are able to drive the old-timey fire engine like in the parade and things like that?
Yeah, it's not so much that they're able to drive, it's just there's a certain number of them that like to drive it. And there's probably in the neighborhood of three or four who really enjoy taking it out and to different events. But a lot of us can drive it, but some people really take pride in it and choose to drive it more than others.
I'm just really happy to see engineer Morris get his badge pinned because I've always ridden that vehicle with him and he does a really good job of driving that thing.
He does, and if I can just say real quick, one of the things engineer Morris did this last year is he's, in addition to building the winery, is we did a lot of kind of restoring of the 35 Ford, but he put a whole new electrical system in it and radiator and all on his own time, so just one of the mechanical aptitude things that we're talking about.
I share those interests, so I appreciate that.
Well, the 35 Ford runs and looks better than it has since I've been with the department, so.
Thank you, Chief. So we're moving on, thank you so much. We're moving on to the city manager reports and I believe that means chief Boaz as well, so thank you, Chief.
Once again, thank you Mayor Manziel and members of council. Before I get started, I would just like to take a moment again and thank the council for your support of the fire department and of myself as fire chief. And I also would like to thank the city manager and the city manager's office as well as the rest of the executive team for their support. I just, one of the things 2017 brought was a great firestorm. And I got to tell you, after going through that as a city, even though it didn't impact us directly with fire, the city staff really came together and the community really came together and it reminded me of all the reasons why I like working in Hillsburg. So it's a great team that we have in place, so thank you for your continued support. So moving on, I'm here tonight to give you an update on our 2017 activities, kind of a snapshot at the end. I'll be glad to take any questions you want or even during the presentation if that's okay. We'll start with staffing. We spoke a little bit to this last Monday night. This is our current staffing, total regular staff of 13. Some of those are day staff like myself, the fire marshal, and the Colister. On shift, we have three fire captains, three fire engineers, and as of July 1st, 2018, we'll have three firefighters as well. So we'll have three people on duty 24 hours a day. We also have a fire inspector and an office assistant, admin assistant. 17 reserve firefighters, four reserve engineers, that's including the two we put engineer badges on tonight. So I'm very happy with the staff we have right now, with the number of reserve staff and how they're all active reserves. We have a very solid reserve program right now, so happy about that. This came up last week, so I just wanted to mention, I don't know if you knew this, but all of our reserve firefighters and firefighter, fire engineers live within what we call the sphere of influence of Hillsburg, meaning should their pager go off, they can respond to the station in a reasonable amount of time and get on an engine and effectively help us with the response. And of the full-time staff, you'll be happy to know that seven live in Hillsburg or immediately outside the city limits, four live in neighboring cities, all within a 20-minute response time. So none of them, none of us live really out of the area. And I think that's part of the reason why we're successful as a fire department and with our community as well. Moving on to some statistics, this is, again, I spoke to this a little bit last Monday, our call volume continues to rise. I put on this slide a four-year trend where you can see 2017 is the highest call volume we've had ever. Some of that can be attributed to the fires and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. But it continues to be, you know, it continues to be on the rise. And I don't foresee that it's going to slow down. I don't know if the increases will be as great as they are now, but it'll be interesting to see what 2018 brings as far as call volume. Right now, if we stay on the same pace we're on now, we'll be right about the same call volume as 2017. So here's, again, four years of incidents. The percentage you see at the bottom is the percentage of our calls total that that is. So you can see 5% of our calls are fires on down the line. Good intent call, those calls have gone up more than some of the others, kind of an uptick in that call type. And just so I'm clear on what that is, those are, well, most of those calls would be like dispatched and canceled en route, or wrong location, or no incident found when we get there, those kind of calls. Smoke checks would fall under that also, which I think is why we've seen a little bit of an increase in that call type. Because after the October fires, with all the smoke in the air, we were receiving a lot of calls for smoke checks. A lot of them were unfounded, but it did increase our call volume in that respect. As that compares to last year, not much change. Medical calls as a percentage of our total call have gone down a little bit. Last year it was 49%. The rest of them stayed pretty much the same as a percentage of our total calls. But you can see that for call types, we're seeing an increase in every call type. So our increase in call volume can't be attributed to one thing or another. We can't just say we had more fires because it was across the board. I just threw this slide in there because I thought you and the public might find it interesting. The busiest days of the week for us are Wednesday and Friday. And our busiest time of the day is between 2:00 and 4:00 in the afternoon. Both of these last two slides are a three-year average. And you can see between 0500 and 0800 is when our call volume really picks up. And that's a really critical time for me as fire chief that I want to capture. That's part of the reason and part of the justification for putting a third firefighter on the engine is a lot of our major calls, vehicle accidents, fires come in at those early morning hours when people are sleeping and they go undetected for longer periods of time. Just a quick note about our mutual aid. We continue to share Battalion 6 coverage with Geyserville and Cloverdale, which we refer to as Zone 6. So just so you know, Battalion 6 is a designation for a chief officer who will be on-call for that 24-hour period and respond basically from Windsor all the way to the Mendocino County line. So for example, when I'm Battalion, when I'm covering Battalion 6, I'll cover it at home at night with my pager on, but I can receive a call as far up as north of Cloverdale. And likewise, they reciprocate that. Geyserville and Cloverdale also cover Battalion 6 and they respond into the city. That doesn't mean that our chief officers aren't available. If somebody from Cloverdale is covering and I'm at home and I'm available, of course, respond as well. It's just to ensure that we have 24-hour chief officer coverage in the North County. So in 2017, we responded mutual aid 75 times and we received mutual aid 42 times. A little bit of a disparity there, but I'm going to attribute that to the October fires because we did send a lot, well, not only the October fires, but a busy fire season. We did give more aid than we received this year. Typically, just so you know, those numbers are pretty close every year and they're in the neighborhood of, you know, 40 to 50. And typically, it's pretty balanced between what we give and what we receive. This year was a little bit of disparity, but I'm not too concerned about it because I think a lot of it can be attributed to the fires. Strike team deployments in 2017, we had 10. That also includes, sometimes we'll send out one person, as what we call a single resource. This year, we sent out one of our captains as a strike team leader trainee a few times. So that's reflected in that 10. The rest of them are engine company responses to other fires throughout the state. And just to be clear, we have pre-arranged reimbursement with the state for all of our resources, so. And that includes our staff time, our engines, and any equipment that we use or break during the fires. Perhaps most importantly, and I want to reassure everybody, we maintain staffing levels at Hillsburg Fire largely by using our reserve firefighters, but some of that may also be overtime. But whenever we send an engine to help our neighboring agencies or, I mean, it could be anywhere in the state or even out of state, we always make sure we're covered in Hillsburg first before we commit those resources. Moving on, I just wanted to touch on the fire services contracts we still have in place with Sonoma County Fire Services. We are still providing service to Fitch Mountain. And that generates about 40 to 50 calls a year, I would say. Again, we're also still providing service to the Dry Creek-Sodiomi area, that's 65 square miles just outside the city limits. And just so you have an idea of where that is, it's West Side Road about out to where Sweetwater Springs is, Olive Mill Creek, and West Dry Creek, I think we go about to where Shemese is. And then on the other side of the river, Olive Belash Avenue, all the way up to Rio Lindo Academy is part of that contract. Couple hundred calls a year. So here's a map of the Fitch Mountain area in case you were interested to see how that intersects with the city of Hillsburg. And here's a map of Sodiomi. So you can see area-wise, it's quite a large area and we do have some long response times out there, but we also respond to a lot of mutual aid in with us. So just to give you an idea of how many calls those two areas or that contract generates each year, here are the numbers, again, small upticks every year. So that represents 15 to 16% of our call volume is to either Fitch Mountain or Sodiomi area.
And you're reimbursed by the county for responding to those calls?
We have a contract in place, which you'll actually see coming up on a council agenda here. We last signed a three-year contract, it'll be up on, well, we need to renew it by July 1st. And that is one contract for both Sodiomi and Fitch Mountain area. And yes, it's a pre-arranged amount with a cost of living increase each year. Just to give you an idea, again, like I said, 15 to 16% of our calls, but here's a slide that illustrates it. Moving on to our fire prevention department. It's been a busy year for fire inspections, as you can see, again, we've been upticks across the board, the exception of the COOPA program, which I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's a certified unified program agency that basically wraps up seven different regulatory agencies into one. And it covers such things as underground storage tanks, hazardous materials, above-ground storage tanks. Fire Marshal Colister oversees that program for ourselves and for the city of Sebastopol. We had a lot more inspections this year, partly because we were doing our triennial COOPA audit, but also because we moved to new web-based, iPad-based inspection software system, which we've been wanting to go to for years. And that's attributed to a lot more efficiency and time management in doing inspections. And I think that's also why you see the engine company inspections more than doubling since last year. So now we have that on iPads, they can go out to the businesses or the residences and they can literally do it all and drop-down menus on the iPad and it emails the owner an inspection report rather than going back to the station and typing it out and sending letters. So we're just a lot more efficient, so we're getting a lot more inspections done. Just a quick slide on the amount of plan check reviews, pretty standard. If you have any questions on what any of these may be, I'll be glad to let you know. Protection systems, I think you wanted that anomaly there and in 2016 can be attributed to some of the subdivisions coming through for plan check with fire sprinkler systems. So we had a couple of projects come through with a lot of fire sprinkler plan checks.
Chief, I think there's one question over here, Councilman Yokus has.
Oh gosh, I'm fine letting you go.
Oh, okay.
Alright, thanks. So one of the things that we pride ourselves on and I'm very happy about is our involvement in the community as a fire department. As you may have noticed, we're very active in our community. We continue to partner with the Santa Rosa Junior College for interns as well as Hillsburg High School. And in addition to doing internships, we also partner quite a lot with, you know, the Fire Academy with doing ride-alongs and helping out with their program down there. Some of the other events we participated in. And a lot of these events we do every year. I'm not going to read down the list, but I am happy to say, I'll reiterate, this year's Bucket Brigade blood drive was 2018, so technically it's not 2017, but we had 100 donors and for the competition between, friendly competition between departments, we came in first place, which was great because we're usually second or third, so that made me very proud. Some of the noteworthy events of 2017, we did, you may remember, we appointed a new fire engineer, Amanda Newhall, and we appointed a new firefighter, Brian Crabbe. We were successful with a few grants, including a grant for an exhaust removal system for the fire department, which you may remember seeing earlier in the year, a grant for the hazard mitigation plan update, which is currently in process. We can thank Deborah Nelson for a lot of these grants. We were able to turn that FEMA grant for the exhaust system into, we were able to We were able to turn that FEMA grant for the exhaust system into, we were able to get three new thermal imaging cameras, I have that too for our fire engines, which the ones we had were aging, so the new ones we have are like the best technology and it's great for the community. Continue to update our policies. We've been doing a lot of work with Fitch Mountain with vegetation clearance. Again, the COOPA triennial audit was a lot of work for our staff this year, a lot of hours in that. And just kind of a feather in our cap, the California State Firefighters Association, you may remember, hosted their conference here this year, which was a lot of fun and some great training came out of that. So with that, I'd be glad to take questions.
Councilman Yocas.
Thank you, Mayor. Great report. A few questions. First of all, it looks like a common theme from last year is how much you rely on the reserves. How much the reserves are a real fundamental part of the backbone of the department? Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Obviously, of course, you are, but the reserve as well. What, how would you, I guess, how would you compare our reserves program with other departments? A, and B, are there ways, I guess another way of saying that is, what are ways that we could emphasize the strengths of our program to keep that viability alive?
Okay, so if your first question, how would I compare it to other departments? From my experience, I think we offer a lot of opportunities to our reserves that they may not find in other departments. They get a lot of opportunity to work right alongside the paid staff to cover shifts to, as these two engineers saw tonight, they can become qualified to cover paid staff shifts. So if our paid staff is at training or on vacation, rather than pay overtime, they're qualified to cover those shifts, which gives them a lot of opportunity. The kind of the lines between the paid staff and our reserve staff have always been non-existent in Hillsburg Fire Department. I don't sense the divide between reserve, volunteers and professionals as some departments may have. We all work very closely together. Everybody's well-respected, morale's very good. And I happen to think we have one of the best programs around. If that answers your first question as far as how we compare. We also, I think, have a lot more dedicated reserves than a lot of other agencies do. It's getting harder and harder to retain and recruit qualified reserve firefighters. And to have twenty-one active people on staff is unusual. I would say probably a lot of departments struggle to maintain ten. So we're doing very well in that respect. And a lot of them live in the community and are dedicated to Hillsburg, which is nice. They're not just trying to get a job as a professional firefighter, which is also okay. To your second question, viability, one of the things I try to do as fire chief is to take every opportunity I can to train our reserve firefighters and send them, for example, we sent a number of them to Fresno this year, which is kind of a statewide convention and training, which, to be able to send our people to that and pick up the cost for that so they can get additional training that benefits us as a department, but also benefits them, I think that's an incentive. But also just the involvement we have in the community and the opportunities that our reserve staff has to participate in the different events we have, I think it really kind of gels us all as a group and I think it makes people enjoy working in Hillsburg and it makes them want to stay.
Great, that absolutely answers my question. And just one more. So we, Councilmember Gold asked about the contracts that we have for the county and that it increases via, you said it has a cost of living increase year over year, but yet we've seen the increase of rates that were, our participation in those calls is increasing, I would argue, a lot more than cost of living.
Right.
At what point do we start questioning our, the numbers of those contracts and start talking about renegotiating?
So I'll jump in and get the chief off the hot seat. I think we're looking at renewing this next, I think, the Fitch Mountain contract for one more year, but the comments that you're making have not gone unnoticed over the past few years. And I think we need to have additional conversations with the county to address those spikes in calls. The reality of it is, is Fitch Mountain, where it's located, we're going to be the ones responding to that regardless, but at the same time, it does have an impact on our department. Sodiomi as well, and Sodiomi is a little more complicated because there are some illerous fees out there, which we have to continue to work with the county on. But I think you'll see more conversations just along those lines over the next couple of years.
Thank you for the save, City Manager McHaleian. He's absolutely right, I agree with him a hundred percent. And what you'll see before you soon is a recommendation from us to renew for one year. And part of that is because we do have the same concerns you do and there will be a time and place to have that conversation right now in the midst of the recovery and everything that happened. I don't know if that's that time, so.
Understood.
You'll see more later.
And my last question, we, I'm noticing that steady increase over the past four years. Would you, what about before 2014? Was it more or less flat and then all of a sudden it's taking a sharp turn up?
I think if I were to show you that graph, you would see continual increases, but not as prevalent as, or not as, that's not the right word, not as large as it happened in the last couple of years. You know, we're slowly creeped up from, you know, a thousand or eleven-hundred to twelve-hundred, but then it seems to have taken a spike in the last few years. So if that were a ten-year average, I would say the line would be a little flatter and then spike up towards the end. We're not seeing massive increases every year over the last ten years.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Chief Boaz, I think more than ever, after this 2017 year, just looking back and just reflecting and we're still in it, I just want to commend you for your service and all of you that come, came tonight to see the different ceremonies, to welcome people. And it's a fraternity, it's a sorority, it's a family, it's a really great organization. And I'm so happy that you're at the helm and I'm really proud to live in a city with such great connections and also just superior service. So I just want to commend you for your leadership and for all the men and women that you work with. And it's just really a great feeling to know that we have people that are connected and efficient and also really, you know, concerned about doing it right. So thank you so much. Really appreciate you giving us the update tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for the kind words and questions.
Thank you. So at this time, I don't know if all the people that are in this fire service want to take a break and move out. We're going to move to our next item, but I want to welcome you to go, if you'd like, if you want to take a break here to get on out of the room. Thank you, Chief. Well, you know, they're the first responders, so we're happy that they're getting. Yeah, thank you. So we're moving into the next item because, again, we moved the council reports to the end to save time and move forward with public comment. So we're moving to public comments on non-agenda items. So this is a time set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters of general interest, not on the agenda, but related to city council RSA business and pursuant to the Brown Act. We are not able to consider any of these issues or take action on any of these requests during this comment period. As your mayor, I'm really hoping to build a council of civility. I really want to make sure people are heard and I also want to make sure that people are kind to one another because we're all here in this room together. So when you come to the podium, there is a sign-in sheet for you and we ask that you sign your name, if you would, and put your address. And it's a three-minute limit, so we're hoping that when you come to, you come up, you don't spend more than three minutes speaking. And I wondered if there was anyone tonight that's wishing to speak on non-agenda items? If I could get your hand raised, if anyone's speaking on a non-agenda item. Okay, well, got to ask that first, huh? Okay, well, here we go. So it doesn't look like we have any public comments on non-agenda items, so we're going to move forward to the next item, which is the consent calendar.
Move for approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote, yes.
Councilmember Golden?
Yes.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Yocas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Higley?
Yes.
Mayor Manziel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're moving to item seven, which is a public hearing on Land Use Code Amendment Housing for Agricultural Employees. And this is an introduction for the first reading and we're going to waive the reading of the text when we do make this movement. And it's an ordinance revising the Hillsburg Municipal Code to expand the zoning districts where employee housing for six or fewer workers is allowed by right and allow employee housing for seven to twelve agricultural workers as a conditional use in the GMU district. And I want to thank Director DeRosa for being here and I don't know everyone, but you'll introduce us.
I will.
Thank you, so welcome, Director DeRosa.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to bring this item to you today. Whenever we have implementation action from our housing element, that's something that we really want to move forward with. And I'm going to introduce Joel Galbraith, who is a senior planner on my staff, who has done the majority, lion's share of the work on this, so I'm going to let him do the presentation and we're both here to answer questions. Thank you.
Mayor Manziel and council members, the item before you is an ordinance amendment regarding sections of the land use code, twenty zero eight one hundred, one fifty, one fifty-five, and twenty twenty-three ten. And the recommendation before you is to review the draft revisions, receive public comment, and introduce for first reading and waive the reading of the text, an ordinance revising the Hillsburg Municipal Code to expand the zoning districts where employee housing for six or fewer workers is allowed by right and allow employee housing for seven to twelve agricultural workers as a conditional use in the GMU district. So back in 2010, the city council amended the land use code to allow employee housing for six or fewer employees to be considered as a single-family dwelling. And this was in the R1 districts and in the Grove-McSues district, and the purpose of this was to be consistent with state law. So the state basically said cities, you need to make it easier to accommodate employees and basically in a single-family environment for six or fewer by right. There was no provision or requirement by the state law to require a larger than six. And, but in 2014, the current general plan was adopted, which included policies to expand employee housing beyond the R1 districts into the MU district and the two-office districts. So that was in the general plan back in 2014, but has not been yet implemented into the current zoning code. So that's, well, that's before you today, based on that previous decision. And last year, we did receive a request, Sagacio Winery approached the city about using their own existing single-family home at 782 Grove Street next to their winery. And they wanted to use that for employee housing for up to twelve agricultural workers. These are the workers they employ that work out in the vineyards. Under our current zoning code, there is nowhere in the city where that could be done. So the proposal before you was to look at that request to see if that could be accommodated with this update. And this amendment went to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on February thirteenth of this year. Planning Commission held a public hearing. No one spoke, no members of the public spoke against the proposal. And the Planning Commission voted seven, I'm sorry, four to two to recommend approval of this request to the city council. So the current general plan contains a couple of policies specific to agricultural workers and employee housing. H3A talks specifically about allowing employee housing for six or fewer employees as a permitted use in the MU and O zones to comply with California Health and Safety Code seventeen hundred, seventeen thousand. And H3, HE3, that's in general to address the housing needs of transient, single farm workers. So these are in our current general plan. So what's before you is a proposed amendments to the land use code, and that's to add employee housing for six or fewer employees as a permitted use in the MU, which is the McSues district, and our two-office districts, and add employee housing for seven to twelve agricultural workers in the Grove-McSues district. And the seven to twelve agricultural workers, that would be subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. So six or fewer is allowed by right in most zoning districts if you want to go, which is required basically by state law. The state does not require us to do anything over six. So the proposal in this one district is to allow over six, but be limited with a maximum of twelve, and that would be by conditional use permit, not by right. So this graphic shows the zoning districts that are before you tonight, which is the two-office districts, which is basically around the hospital and along Hillsburg Avenue, the Grove-McSues along Grove, and the MU districts, which are scattered around the So as stated before, the recommended action is review the draft, receive public comment, and introduce for the first reading, waive the reading of the text, and ordinance revising the Hillsburg Municipal Code to expand the zoning districts where employee housing for six or fewer workers is allowed by right and allow employee housing for seven to twelve agricultural workers as a conditional use in the GMU district. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions, the council? Yes, okay. Councilman Yocas.
Thank you. Questions? So I guess, first question is, why specifically agricultural only for those extra seven to twelve?
The, one reason, I guess just a couple of reasons. One reason is the request we got from the winery, it was specific to agricultural workers. And the other one is this is something new for Hillsburg, having employee housing this large, so kind of, I guess, to reduce unintended consequences, whether opening it up to all employee housing or for all employees is to limit it to this one type of employee, which was consistent with the request that we received. And that's why it's also just being proposed in the one district as opposed to other districts.
I guess that pretty much takes the wind out of my sails. No, that's a great, good answer. Interesting. Well, then my final answer would be, so there were two commissioners who voted against. Can you maybe for the record, explain what were their concerns?
I think their concerns are would not, this was something new, it's larger than six, and there may not be enough with a conditional use permit and the way conditional use permits are enforced and looked at it, there maybe would not be enough oversight because typically if there's a problem, the city, like most cities, does not do active enforcement, rely on complaints. So I think there was a concern that there would not be enough oversight.
Good enough, thanks.
Vice Mayor Higley.
Yeah, my questions were along the lines of the last part about the, both Commissioner Sivian and Botterini had concerns. Commissioner Sivian was specifically regarding the improvements, like required improvements, what would potentially be required. And then Botterini had questions regarding overcrowding. So I guess the question is, okay, we're going to do this for up to twelve, but what if there's fifteen? I'm assuming it's complaint-based?
Right.
Just maybe, I want to make sure that their concerns were addressed.
So employee housing is regulated by California state law, so there's no provisions, as this is proposed, to reduce standards. The state law allows the cities and other jurisdictions to come up with their own minimum standards, so there's no proposal here to come up with new minimum standards. So, so it depends on the size of the, if they're using an existing building, it depends on the size, how many people could be housed there. The Sagacio, they're proposing, the way they propose a zoning would allow in this district up to twelve by use permit, they're proposing ten. So they're not proposing, based on the size of their house, and their goal is to minimize the improvements that they want to do. And my understanding is if they go over ten, that would trigger improvements like sprinklers and other things. So their goal is to minimize their improvement, so they're proposing ten for this particular dwelling. So if they want to go larger than that, that could trigger improvement. So it depends on the size of the building, on how many, whether you could do the maximum of twelve or not.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so we are now going to open this to the public. This is a public hearing item, so would anyone like to speak on this matter?
Seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on that? Yeah, we do. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, clearly passes, thank you. Okay, so at this point, we need to just, for a first reading, introduce it and waive the reading of the text, so I'm just, want to entertain a motion at this point, I suppose. There's any discussion?
If there's no discussion, I will offer as first reading by title only, an ordinance to the city council, the city of Hillsburg, amending Hillsburg Municipal Code, section dot two zero, dot zero eight, dot one zero zero, permitted and conditionally permitted uses in ORM and MP districts, and section twenty, dot zero eight, dot one fifty, permitted and conditionally permitted uses GMU district, and section twenty, dot zero eight, dot one five five, permitted and conditionally permitted uses in MU district, and section twenty, dot twenty-eight, dot three ten. Definitions- and Section 20 dot 28 dot 310, definitions regulating employee housing and employee housing for agricultural workers, and approving a related SEQA exemption for the Municipal Code zoning amendment project.
I'll second that.
There was a second. So...
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Niokus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Manziel?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you again for the support on that one. Appreciate your time and getting, it's housing, we're working on housing. So, that's good. All right. Moving on to number eight, there is no old business. So, we're moving to an item number nine, which would be new business. And the first thing is the greenhouse gas emissions and identification of reduction focus areas and goals. And we are going to be in line to adopt a resolution reaffirming the city's intent to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through a coordinated effort with Sonoma County's Regional Climate Protection Authority, and to approve local implementation measures as identified in the Climate Action 2020 and Beyond Plan. So, thank you for joining us. Director Crowley?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So, as you have mentioned, we have before you a resolution for reaffirming the city's intent to reduce greenhouse gases. I won't go through the reading of this entire resolution, but we'll give you a little bit of background. This resolution, or a similar resolution, was adopted by the RCPA at the county level, and then also adopted by some other participating cities with the RCPA. And so, they've asked all the cities to kind of come through and, and get some feedback from the council and potential for reaffirming their intent to reduce greenhouse gases. So, as far as background, what the city's been doing in these past decades, since 2002, the City Council has adopted many resolutions related to climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. So, there's nothing new for the city. In 2013, the city began work with the county staff, the RCPA, to develop the greenhouse gas reduction implementation program, otherwise known as GRIP. In 2015, the governor signed an executive order that has some very ambitious goals of reducing greenhouse gases by 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and then also by 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. Aligned with the governor's greenhouse gas goals, and the RCPA developed the Climate Action Plan 2020 and Beyond, otherwise known as the CAP. So, the current status of the CAP is that it is a complete document, and outlines reduction measures and impacts that could be achieved by the participating agency. So, each of these reduction measures provides the agency an understanding of what actions they could take that would drive greenhouse gases, and to what level they would drive greenhouse gas reductions. The CAP was developed with an accompanying impact, environmental impact report. The EIR was subsequently challenged, and therefore withdrawn with no further adoption. And so, the CAP just kind of sits as a document and collection of information. The CAP does still serve to advise climate protection efforts for the county. So, where is Healdsburg right now? And so, this chart shows what Healdsburg's estimated greenhouse gas productions were at 2010. And what you can see from the chart is that the largest areas that produce greenhouse gas in the city are on-road transportation and building energy. Building energy is roughly split between 50% electricity and 50% natural gas. So, some portion of it's electric, some portion is natural gas. Eliminating carbon from the city's energy source, as we run our own electric utility, we can choose what energy we're purchasing, could significantly reduce greenhouse gas reductions. So, looking at those two large areas, on-road transportation and energy, city energy, we want to focus in a few areas, and really try to drive our resources towards a few things that would have the greatest impact. Primarily low-carbon and no-carbon transportation would have a big impact on reducing greenhouse gases for the city. If we could reduce the number of trips per day, trips to and from work, trips to and from the store, trips from your neighborhood, transfer those to either electric vehicle use, or you transfer those to walking or biking, or just avoid the trips altogether, that would reduce greenhouse gases. Increasing renewable energy. So, as it was shown in the previous slide, the city provides energy, roughly 50% of that is, is all of the building energy, greenhouse gas production. So, if we could purchase low-carbon or no-carbon energy sources, we could reduce greenhouse gases. Lowering the water-related greenhouse gas emissions. One of the largest combined energy uses in town is water delivery, water treatment, water delivery, and wastewater treatment. So, if we can focus in on the water and wastewater operations and green that energy that's used to provide those services, we could lower the city's greenhouse gas emissions. And then also, city's planning and land use policies. If we can implement policies that reduce the number of miles driven, increase building efficiencies, and encourage low-carbon transportation, will also drive greenhouse gas reductions. So, some of the near-term measures that could be implemented, again, this is a resolution to reaffirm your intent to reduce greenhouse gases, not necessarily to approve individual items. Those would come forward to you later. But near-term items that may come before council in the near term would be to purchase or develop more low or no-carbon energy from, for the entire community. So, looking out and seeing what the NCPA could provide as far as low-carbon or no-carbon energy, and, and executing those contracts. The city was able to execute a contract last summer for two megawatts of solar. So, we were able to bump up the city's carbon-free energy by 7%. So, that will help. But other things like that would help reduce the city's greenhouse gas production. Expand public EV charging to reduce the number of on-road emissions. The public charging stations here are, are very popular. Probably the biggest complaint we get about them is there's not enough. So, if we could expand that, that would help. Improve connectivity to city bikeways and pedestrian pathways, encourage biking and walking versus driving. Promote alternate work schedules, work share, ride-share programs, use of public transit to reduce vehicle trips per day. Those are all public policy things that could be implemented citywide, not just necessarily at the city, but citywide, to reduce the number of trips related to people driving to and from work, or to and from schools. Alternate work schedules are basically a work schedule that reduces the number of work days per week. Either it's reducing one day per week, or two days, or one day per two weeks. And that reduces the greenhouse gas that produces by people driving. Encourage planning for biking and pedestrian within multifamily and commercial developments. So, again, those land use policies that would drive connected community for pedestrians and for bikes. And then continue to promote energy efficiency and water conservation. That's a foundational thing. So, the less we use, the less we're going to produce as far as greenhouse gases. So, with that, we have a recommended action to adopt a resolution reaffirming the city's intent to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through a coordinated effort with Sonoma County's Regional Climate Protection Authority, and to improve local, approve local implementation measures as identified in the Climate Action 2020 and Beyond Plan. So, with that, I would ask for any questions from the council.
Do we have any questions from the council? Okay. Councilman?
So, yet another interesting report from you. A couple of questions, first of all. What, so, I'm looking at the, at the actual numbers that you, that you're quoting for, for greenhouse gas emissions. How did you go about measuring those, the on-road transportation? Let's just focus on the biggies, on-road transportation and building energy.
So, this, this graphic comes from the CAP plan, and the RCPA staff and their consultants did a tremendous amount of work. I really encourage everybody to look at that plan and see how much work and effort went into it, and how much information is there. But they did a tremendous amount of work to develop these numbers. They worked with PG&E to get the natural gas numbers. They worked with City Electric to get our numbers as far as how much energy was put into buildings. They worked to do studies on how much vehicle traffic was going to and from different cities to develop these numbers. So, a lot of thought and effort went into those.
So, I guess, one of the, so, so, so the on-road transportation means, includes routes going into Healdsburg as well as going out, as well as within?
Yes. Yes. My understanding, yes. Trips to Healdsburg for people that come into town to work on a daily basis, or vice versa.
Any breakdown on?
I think if you actually dive into the appendices of the report, there is a breakdown. Do I know those numbers off the top of my head? No, I don't. Sorry.
Okay. The report that Mr. Iler will be giving, the next council meeting will address, maybe not to the exact numbers Terry, Terry may have in the report, but will address how many folks come into Healdsburg and work versus leave Healdsburg to go work. So, it'll be a broad number. And then, second question, so I'm looking at the actual, at the proposed measures. So, can you help me understand what those proposals, what we're really targeting here? So, for instance, I'm looking at the local measures, which is page five, five, five dash four eight. Goal one, increase building energy efficiency, measure 1L2, outdoor lighting. You're saying that in order to hit the 2020, the 2020 GHG reductions target, we need to have 180% of our outdoor lighting to be LEDs? Is that what we're, is that what you're saying?
What, so these numbers is, early on in the process, in 2015, 2016, working with the RCPA staff, a group of city staff worked to look at these different measures, these different choices, to figure out what the city could potentially achieve, reasonably achieve, and what would be appropriate for the city. There's some things like livestock management, that's not appropriate for Healdsburg. So, we didn't even consider those things. But certain things like outdoor lighting, those are things we can control and influence. And so, we looked at those, and we said, okay, well, what could we get done? And outdoor lighting isn't just streetlights, it's commercial buildings, everything. So, what could we achieve inside the city of Healdsburg? And so, that's the thought there, is if you can get to 80% of your outdoor lighting, at high-efficiency lighting, you would be able to reduce 163 for the greenhouse gases. And so, each one of these measures adds up to the total kind of goal. And, and in 2015, 2016, what we were looking at is trying to get to 25% by 2030. Now, this is kind of a suggestion or a roadmap. There's certain things that the city's done differently since then. So, the bike share program is not something that was really contemplated in this plan, but it's something that the city's achieved as a greenhouse gas emissions. But there's still certain things on here on this list that we can work towards, and that we can continue to bring forward to council to do for greenhouse gas emissions. And also working, collaborating with the RCPA and regional programs that are, meet these local measures.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. So, then, it's reasonable for us to say, okay, like, in a year or so, come back and let's, okay, let's look to see where, where, how are we doing?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable for, for staff to come back to council on an annual basis and say, where are we at with these programs?
Yeah. Okay.
Councilwoman Gold?
Yeah. I'm just very intrigued by these near-term measures. They, they seem like a bunch of very good ideas. And I'm wondering how we can, as, how the council can support you better in, in promoting these measures. I know we can't discuss each of them tonight, but should we schedule a work session to talk about it, or have it maybe as part of our goal-setting discussion?
Yeah. So, getting a tip from the city manager. So, working on the goal sessions helps a lot. You know, I think, I think certainly we've had some discussions about the EV charging. You know, we brought that forward with council with the additional parking lot to approve additional spots for charging, to approve that. We'll probably bring something back with the CIP program for council's consideration to expand that throughout the city, to provide that public access to EV charging. As far as the no-carbon, low-carbon energy, those are, those are bigger dollars, longer decision processes. And so, those will probably be brought forward in a, in a separate council meeting to, to get a little bit more specific guidance on what and how fast council wants to see that happen. Policy statements, those things will come as well. But I, I think the goal sessions might be a good starting point.
If I can add to what Director Crowley mentioned, you know, I think when you talk about power procurement, there's some real opportunities there. Then, those come with a cost. And so, I think during the goal-setting process to determine, you know, direct staff to continue to explore that, but really come back with a policy or recommendations from staff over the next 12 months that addresses wherever council wants to go with that. But I think power procurement would be something that Director Crowley could definitely work within CPA. And I think there might be some great opportunities to reduce her carbon footprint. But again, that will come with a cost. And through that, through that, that process with staff, we can get better direction with, from council on that. But I would, I would suggest we look at that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? All right. So, we are now going to open for a public comment on this issue of greenhouse emissions and reduction of greenhouse emissions in Healdsburg. Would anyone like to offer any comments? Okay. Welcome.
Just three questions. Is it feasible, and if so, are there any plans to build any solar arrays or solar farms on any city buildings or property? Are there any incentives in place or plans incentive in place for city workers to carpool or bike to work? And to date, what are the metrics against expectation on the bike share plan in terms of performance and the amount of usage? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is anyone else wanting to offer any comment on this resolution? Okay. So, we'll take it back. And those are three specific questions. Director Crowley, would you like to attempt to address those, or?
Yeah. So, so, the building of solar arrays, so we're, we are currently looking at trying to put something together for floating solar at the wastewater treatment plant. It's going to range in size, depending on what the project development looks like, between one to 1.8 megawatts, which would be enough load to offset the wastewater treatment plant's energy usage for the majority, majority of it. So, we are looking at promoting that. One of the challenges that we would have for council's consideration at a future point is that developing those solar sites in town are much more expensive than going out and getting utility-scale solar. So, we're potentially looking at a cost per kilowatt hour of about eight cents for the wastewater treatment plant, whereas we can go out and get utility-scale solar for about four cents, about half the cost. And so, there's a, there's a, there's a decision point there. Do we want to develop some of the resources locally, or do we want to look at more of the utility-scale generation plants that are much, much larger scale and get those scales economy? But we are looking at developing some type of solar array in, in the city. We feel like that's a good benefit for the city's wastewater treatment plant, and we'll discuss that a little bit more at a future meeting. So, and incentives for carpools. So, again, this is part of the, the nudge. Does the city council want to look at greenhouse gas emissions? If it's yes, then we would come back and look at city policies that we could implement that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so, ride-share programs are part of that. Incentivizing public transit is part of that. Also, looking at alternate work schedules to reduce those trips into town. I would say that the city council should consider not just looking at the city's work schedules and ride-share programs, but look at working with the chamber to incentivize those programs with all of the businesses in the downtown. And then, as far as matrix for the bike share program, I, I don't know what those goals are, or what we're looking at as far as utilization. I'm not sure what Zegger would recommend as utilization, but I think we probably could come back to council with some information on that.
Thank you, Director Crowley. And I don't, I, I'm curious about that latter, but I know we need a little time before we can do any kind of reflective piece. No matter what, there has to be a reflective piece. So, I think that that's the most important thing to look at when we make any kind of change or implement a new program. Having, having, I am a director on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and I did talk to Director Suzanne Smith. And we have a new director of Climate Protection Agency. Lauren Casey has gone off to work for Apple. So, she's left the county position, but we have a new person today. I don't know her name. But anyway, I'm really excited about this. And just to bring some commentary, I just wanted to mention that I would concur that we need to nudge. I, I want to be a nudger. I don't think that's a word. Okay. I'm going to, I'm not going to be the decider either. I'm going to say, I'm really supportive of being more proactive as a council. And I don't want to keep putting everything to council goal session night. But I really want to ask ourselves this question, you know, what type of energy does Healdsburg want, you know? And I think that being a member of the Northern California Power Agency is an exciting opportunity for us. And I'm hoping that we can continue to work with them, and... for us. And I'm hoping that we can continue to work with them and buy more low, no carbon energy sources. And I think that's really important. And, and when I go to the meetings, they're all in the paradigm of Sonoma Clean Power. And they always say, Northern California Power Agency, what are you doing? And, and Heelsburg is unique. And so I really am excited to see this council. And I, I support anything we can do to be proactive in moving toward this goal. And so this is aspirational, but I do think it's an important one for us. So I support it. I'm still curious about building energy. I still wonder when we, when we have big developers like Montage coming north now, or even looking at replay and wanting so much to see more innovation and energy. But then I met with you on Friday, Director Crowley, and the conversation we had was that it's, it's like you said, is there a feasibility there financially? And, and there's this cycle of we, to save water, it actually affects us adversely. And there's all these connections around economy and ecology. I always thought they meshed together when I learned environmental science, but feels like sometimes we get into the dollar more than maybe what we need to do to actually be forward thinking. So I do want to make one more comment. I know this is unorthodox for the mayor to start, but I, I feel a lot for this one. I want to say also that we need an environmental, or we need a conservation analyst. The position still isn't filled. I know that we are looking to hire the person that was already helping us last year. And I really feel like it's a very important job. And I think we, so is that, is that, maybe we get an update on that?
The, the recruitment is open right now. So we're accepting applications. I'm not sure when the deadline is.
It's open till filled.
Open till filled. There you go.
So do we have very many applications on that?
I don't know.
No.
I checked today and we had one, unfortunately. So now, we're gonna try and cast a wider net and see if we can get some more applications in, but it'll take a little bit more time.
What is the job title again?
Utility Conservation Analyst.
So that was, again, a position that I really connected with when I first come on council. And I really hope that we continue to, to have that component, especially as we move into summer and potentially looking at drought issues. And so I think it's an important one. So I support Director Crowley in getting that position filled. I know that we can't force it, but maybe cast a wider net, whatever. So are there any other comments before we offer? Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we do carpool to NCPA meetings. And a lot of this stuff is the topic of conversation on the way up there and back. So it's great for brainstorming. I think the one about the, the floating solar, I think you were in the car too, were kind of bouncing off, I, what about this? And, you know, you were starting to kind of go down that road and things about, you know, reducing the green algae. And so I just wanted to let the council know and the public know that these conversations are constantly ongoing. These meetings with NCPA are a monthly thing. So when we do carpool, there's, you know, once you get past, you know, where did you swim? Or those kind of conversations, it dives into this stuff. So I just wanted to share that.
You, Vice Mayor Haley.
I'll offer a resolution of the city council of the city of Heelsburg reaffirming the city's intent to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as a part of a coordinated effort with Sonoma County's Regional Climate Protection Authority, and to approve local implementation measures identified in Climate Action 2020.
Second?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haley?
Yes.
Mayor Manziel?
Yes. All right. Moving along now to another new business item, which is a request from Bike Heelsburg to operate a pedicab business. And this is, we're going to be receiving a staff report and provide direction to staff on whether to approve Bike Heelsburg's proposal to operate a 15-person pedicab within the city of Heelsburg with or without self-serve alcoholic beverages and/or amplified sound onboard. So thank you, Officer Jenkins.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor Manziel, fellow council members. As you mentioned before you tonight is an informational report to provide staff direction on proposal to operate a pedicab here in Heelsburg. The city received a proposal from Bike Heelsburg to operate a 15-person pedicab as depicted in the picture before you. As part of their business proposal, they're looking to operate seven days a week and offer up to four tours a day. And what, as part of their request, they're asking to permit alcoholic beverages to be allowed to be consumed onboard. And as part of that, under California law, they're not allowed to serve or dispense alcohol. The customers would be bringing it onboard themselves. As part of their proposal, they provided the proposed routes that their tours would take. If you see, there's a few different colors up there. The blue indicates a regular route usage. The green would be for anticipated historic road use for historic tour of Heelsburg. And the yellow is what's considered more congested areas that they're proposing they would stay away from during rush hours. There's about 26 different numbers up there, and those are proposed stop and locations for them to load and unload passengers. The applicants have worked with local businesses to arrange use of their private property to load and unload. Additionally, they have worked with Sonoma County Transit to receive approval to use the bus loading zone right there in front of Plaza Park on Heelsburg Avenue when not being used by a bus. And a few of these locations would also indicate current loading zones that are on street. So, under California law, the vehicle code allows for these pedicabs to operate, but it retains local control, meaning that they're not allowed to operate unless a city has expressly authorized it through a resolution or an ordinance. As part of that, the city gets to retain whether they want to allow alcohol consumption on the pedicabs. Because we do not have a current ordinance resolution here in Heelsburg at this time, they're not allowed to operate. So there's a few options available to the city council tonight, including allowing, having staff come back with a resolution to allow pedicabs with alcoholic beverages to return with a resolution approving them but without, or take no action, meaning pedicabs cannot operate. And we'll talk about that again here in a moment. So staff has met with the applicants and also other cities within California that allow for pedicabs to operate. In reaching out to the other cities, including Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, Fresno, Sacramento, and Palm Springs, the biggest concern they've had so far is whether the pedicabs are a fit for the community. In staff's meeting with the applicants, a few other areas of concern were identified, including traffic congestion. Pedicabs are manpowerd. There are people pedaling that propel them. The top speed of human power with these pedicabs is approximately five miles an hour. The pedicab that's being proposed to be used does have an electronic assist mode in it that will help them achieve about 10 miles per hour. Given the speed, traffic will have an impact when it's being on the roadway. Another area of concern was parking and stopping locations. Staff talked extensively with the applicants about this. And based on their business proposal, it seems like their plan is adequate to meet or address that concern. Next is alcoholic beverages and controlling whether people who are onboard actually step off the pedicab with an open container. Much like any other licensed premise, it would be the owner's responsibility to control that. The fourth area of concern is noise. As part of their business model, they're looking to having background music or amplified sound as part of the historic tours and guided tours of town. The vehicle code prohibits any amplified noise currently beyond 50 feet. So they would be adhered to that standard as well. And finally, the planning department has expressed some concerns about consistency with recent city council and planning commission policies surrounding alcohol. So as previously mentioned, there are three options before council tonight. One is to receive the report and provide no further direction to staff. Since state law requires a jurisdiction adopt either resolution or enact an ordinance before a pedicab can operate, this option would maintain where we're at today, which prohibits the operation of pedicabs here in Heelsburg. Second option is to direct staff to return with the resolution authorizing the operation of the pedicab as proposed with consumption of self-serve alcoholic beverages and amplified sound. The third option would be to direct staff to return with the resolution authorizing the operation of a pedicab business, excuse me, but not as proposed. And some modifications could be without alcoholic beverages being consumed onboard and/or the allowing of amplified sound. And that concludes our presentation. The applicants are here if you have questions for them tonight.
Thank you, Officer Jenkins. All right. Are there any questions from the council?
I just have one.
Yes.
Technical question.
Councilman McCaffrey.
Lieutenant Jenkins, when, when talking about amplified sound, is that, would, would sound that the vehicle makes from its operation be considered amplified sound? Or is that something different, like loud motorcycle or a hot rod or something like that?
Those are two separate statutes. So we're talking amplified sound or music. So it could be a PA system, it could be the thump, thump, thump you hear going down the street from someone's face.
Thank you.
Councilman Nayokas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few questions. What defined, there's a reference to rush, rush times of seven to eight AM and
Correct.
five to six PM. How, how do we define those?
So those were defined by the applicant between seven and eight AM and five to six PM. We just, as part of this proposal, use their numbers.
Do you concur with that as being rush times?
Any rush hours dependent on the day and what could be going on in town. So you, we do see more increase in traffic during those normal commute times as people are coming into work and leaving. Weekends could be entirely different. So.
Would you recommend any other, any modifications to those, to those rush times then?
We would have to work with the applicant as far as what is the best model to use for any day of the week. And yeah, the weekend, you're looking at probably between 10 AM up through 7 PM.
Right, okay. Were there, there's, there aren't any, there's no mention of any hours of operation? Is it just during daylight hours between sunrise and sunset?
I believe the applicant had mentioned they were looking at nine AM to about 10 PM. But I, that's just off the top of my head. I'd have to go back.
Okay. We can, we can reference that. And then finally, would there be some sort of a licensing kind of arrangement where they, they have, just like any, like, let's say a conditional use permit, where an operator has to abide by rules where they're shut down? Is there any sort of like licensing here that would require them to follow these rules or?
Under what's before council tonight, no, there would be no licensing. There's about 10 to 12 different sections of the vehicle code that regulate pedicabs, including insurance requirements, licensing as far as the driver's license, et cetera. And that would kind of dictate the licensing of it.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's my questions.
Okay. Any other questions from the dice?
Yeah.
Okay, just a minute. Vice Mayor Haley?
Real quick, I think in the report, this isn't really intended for hop-on, hop-off type of situations. It's pre-booked. So it's not kind of equal to like a taxi. It's more like a limo or a rented limo bus kind of arrangement. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Councilman McCaffrey?
I'm sorry, I, I just thought of one more question. I, I've been aware of a, a pedicab business called Heelsburg Pedicab that's operated in town. And this, the staff report says that pedicabs are not allowed. Is that, what's the story with, with that?
The distinction is the vehicle code that requires authorization by either resolution or ordinance talks about pedicabs in excess of seven passengers. Sorry, eight or more passengers. So there's a distinction in the vehicle code that would require this one to come forward, whereas the other one does not.
And may I ask one more time for the visual of the actual transportation? So is that the actual pedicab?
That is the actual
So that is it?
Is it?
So that, the, the strip that's on each side is potentially where someone would have a drink?
Correct.
Okay. Cause I just wasn't sure. So what is the diameter on that? I'm just curious. What is the length of that in terms of a, does anyone know?
I would have to defer to the applicant.
Maybe the applicant would know.
Wide, that's what I meant, wide, yeah. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if we could get
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was just trying to get specific information. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Thank you. All right. So I go ahead and open this up to public comment. And you have three minutes if you'd like to come up and share any comments or ask any questions on this issue. Welcome you to the podium. So I wasn't sure about that, City Manager. So you want the applicant to come forward then?
I just, if you want to have a Q and A, I thought it'd be better to have the applicant come up. That's all I was getting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant for later. Okay. Thank you, City Manager. I misunderstood you. Okay. So if the applicants would come forward, we could ask you specific questions and you wouldn't be calling out from the audience. We could hear your voice. Thank you. So welcome. So would you please state your names and maybe just share a bit about? Yeah, you can just share, just generalized, anything that you think we're asking that might become forward. Then we'll ask other questions if we'd like.
Sure. Yep. So thank you for having us here. First off, we are grateful. Can you hear me? We are grateful for you guys for working with us here. And thank you, Lieutenant Jenkins. We appreciate your time. We actually did kind of a bit of research here and things that we wanted to share with you, but it would be about five to 10 minutes. I don't know if you want to do that, or if you just would prefer to get to questions.
You could support five minutes. Five minutes, okay?
Is that okay?
Okay, I'm seeing, okay, five minutes, go.
Okay, great. Okay. So, starting off on the heels of the city's goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we are thrilled to show just how we can help to achieve that. So that was wonderful to see tonight. We, we'd like to take a few minutes to refresh you on the intent and goals of Bike Heelsburg and also to address the concerns in the staff report. As mentioned in the staff report, our company will offer guided tours throughout Heelsburg. We are a tour operator. The destination of the tours will vary depending on the time of day, as well as the requests of the group's booking. These will range from exercise tours in the morning to progressive lunch and dinner tours, to art gallery and antique store tours, wine tasting tours, historical tours, so on and so forth. The participants in our tours will be locals and tourists alike. It will be comprised of families, friends, coworkers, tourists, corporate retreats, wedding groups, birthday parties, graduation groups, et cetera. What was not in the staff report, understandably because you're writing about concerns, were the positive impacts that we foresee. And we envision our tours and bike having positive impacts on health and community. The bike contributes to a car-free, sustainable Heelsburg, and is eco-friendly and green, producing no emissions. It is healthier for the air and its passengers. As it is people-powered, it will also contribute to the health of its riders. Safety, I'm not going to go through this at length. It is in compliance with a number of safety restrictions for California SB 530. Community, the bike will promote community engagement and relations by providing a fun, healthy circular venue where riders can engage with each other, their community leaders and teachers. The historically relevant tours will also engage the senior community, which is kind of cool, in Heelsburg as volunteer citizens and self-proclaimed history buffs can come aboard and share their knowledge. Holly may talk a bit more about that in a minute. Local citizens will also avail of the tours for birthday parties, corporate retreats and events, retirement parties, weddings, shuttle services, and the like. The bike will be participating in local parades and charitable events, and will visit local nonprofits such as the Heelsburg Center for the Arts, and partner with others such as the Russian Riverkeeper. We also anticipate hiring up to five employees, creating more employment possibilities in Heelsburg. Okay, I'm just going to skip to the concerns in the staff report, as I think it may answer some questions. As you mentioned, the, the areas of concern are traffic, parking, alcohol, and noise. So starting off with traffic, do you want to put our map back up? Thank you. Right. So as Lieutenant Jenkins mentioned, the yellow areas are the ones that we're going to avoid during peak traffic ideally. We are working with a number of businesses for a reason, two reasons. One is to spread awareness of non-plaza-centered businesses in our community, which is where most of the traffic is focused, as you'll notice. And number two, number two is to ensure we are able to mitigate traffic concerns during busy times. Okay. Parking, that's pretty much adequate as noted. Alcohol, okay, this is the biggie. So as noted in the staff report, the, our company would not sell or provide alcoholic beverages to customers. Again, we are a tour operator, not an alcoholic establishment. No alcohol, no California alcohol sales license is required, if that answers one of the questions you I said. Also noted by staff in the report, under California Also noted by staff in the report, under California law, such pedicabs are allowed to operate and permit the consumption of self-serve alcoholic beverages with a number of requirements for training and supervision imposed by the state statute. There are a list of them, which I'm happy to read to you later if you'd like, I don't want to take too much time. One of these is that we did attend an LEAD, ABC-certified course for drivers, and onboard safety monitors. And what I'd like to point out is that there is a driver on the bike at all times, and if everyone is over 21 and if alcohol is allowed, we will also have an onboard safety monitor. This is a separate person, their sole and entire job is to monitor alcohol on the bike. So this is their whole job. I think that would definitely mitigate the concern that they might have.
My name's Chris Billings, thank you. First thing I'd like to mention is some concerns about community fit. And you might have a preconceived notion of what this bike is, but I just want to say that we're providing an upscale tour experience, and we feel like it will fit in Healdsburg, and it's not going to be a party bike. So, thank you for that. Just real quick, I'm not going to read this whole thing. For noise, we did do testing. I stood 50 feet away from Jessica. We had our speaker system. We also had a decibel reader, and we determined that 60 decibels at 50 feet would be in compliance with the California Vehicle Code, Article 127007. And it's also in compliance with Healdsburg Municipal Code, Chapter 9.32 regarding noise, and I believe the section is 0 or .080. And that's for residential and commercial. So that decibel level would be in compliance. And I'd just like to touch on the environmental analysis. It wasn't in the quick thing, but in the staff report, it said there's no direct or indirect physical changes to the environment, and we believe this is inaccurate. Bike Healdsburg is green, environmentally friendly, and will have a positive impact on the environment. We can plausibly remove up to 15 cars. The previous agenda item was about greenhouse gas emissions and identifying reduction focus areas and goals. And in the report, it was determined that on-road transportation accounts for 61% of the greenhouse gas emissions and is the largest source of greenhouse gas in Healdsburg. The Climate Action Plan, the CAP measure, includes five focus areas that the city has, quote, "strong influence or direct control over," one being low-carbon, no-carbon transportation, stressing the importance of promoting biking and walking throughout Healdsburg. Just yesterday, I saw five to six Sprinter vans for barrel tasting. The carbon footprint for each vehicle is approximately 370 grams of carbon dioxide per mile. Assuming two miles of driving within Healdsburg, that equals 4,440 grams of carbon dioxide in our city from those vehicles alone. Our bike is...
Do you mind just wrapping up?
Yeah, this is the last thing.
Because we're going to get more public comment. Thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Our bike's completely green and will help contribute to a reduction of greenhouse gases. That's in line with Governor Brown's executive order, B 3015. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Billings, thank you. Okay, so if you would be okay with it, we're going to move on to some public comment.
Sure.
And thank you so much for starting us out, I appreciate it. So again, inviting people to come up to speak, if you would. And again, it's three minutes, and we're open for public comment. Welcome.
The bike part is terrific, I love it, but it's the alcohol. Do we need more drunkards on our streets? Thank you.
Okay. Welcome.
Completely non-bias, I'm Thomas Bangs, in the River Bell Inn in town here. Can you hear me now? There you go. I'm Thomas Bangs, I own the River Bell Inn in town here. I think you got a great opportunity, you have two great people trying to put a new business in your town here. And a little more detail-oriented probably than what you want to hear, but I think if you start with a business like this, with two great people like this, you can't go wrong. It's a fun business, it's not a party bike, like she said. They're very interested in doing the tours through town. And like the previous comment, I don't envision, you know, a bunch of drunks on a bicycle like it turns party bike, so.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to speak? Welcome.
Hello. How's that? Okay, I'm Holly Hoods, I live here in Healdsburg, and I'm the director and curator of the Healdsburg Museum. Jessica and Chris approached me at the museum about the possibility of doing historic tours as part of this new proposed bike program. First of all, I was relieved that they didn't envision me riding around on a bike trying to give tours. But they were talking about trying to show people parts of the historical community that they might not see some other way. And my interest in the museum is not only trying to get people to come to the museum, but trying to get the history out in the community. I liked the idea of this business because it seems like it could appeal to both locals and tourists. I think on the face of it, it seems probably more tourist-oriented, but I feel that it's... For instance, we do historic walking tours at the museum, and some seniors can't go on those tours, you know? This has the opportunity for people to be able to ride, not everybody on the tour bus has to be a peddler. And I like the idea of having a chance to show the history of the community to people who might be interested in signing up and going on a tour around town. So I just wanted to say, that's my support from the museum.
Thank you.
Hi, Rosie Fabian Sherman-Street. Hello, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, and council members and city staff. I'm a little confused, and I just want to have a question answered. A friend of mine, Dreah, had a pedicab company. It was just two-seater, and she operated mostly in the plaza, and I don't believe she's doing that anymore, maybe just for the summertime. So it says here that there is no... Gosh, my eyes here. No resolution. So I'm curious as to how it was that she operated. It was kind of a low-impact thing. I know this is a bigger, you know, vehicle here, which I think is terrific, because we've talked about getting people from one side of Healdsburg Avenue to the other, you know, the hotels down at Dry Creek downtown. And I think this is a great way to do that, going Healdsburg Avenue, Grove Street, and I'm all for it, except the alcohol makes me uncomfortable. I hear that they're trying to monitor that, but I think we have enough of that, and a lot of people are kind of, you know, I'm concerned people maybe will fall off of it, and it will be a liability to the city. So whenever I'm thinking about something with the city, I'm always thinking about liability. So that's just my piece, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Welcome.
My name's Aubrey, I'm a Healdsburg resident and also a recreational cyclist. I'm pretty excited for the activity that could be involved, and the community inclusion that could be used here. I think the senior program that Jessica was talking about made a big impact to me, I think that would be a lot of fun. And there are groups of people in Healdsburg that are interested in exercise and would use this as something for that activity.
Anyone else like to speak? Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Kathy LaPointe, and I have had several discussions with Jessica and Chris about this project from the beginning. And what I want to emphasize is the tours they're planning are quite extensive, they're not an hour long, two hours, somewhere four hours. And they have stops for lunch, progressive lunch, she's talked to the businesses for timeframes, there may be tea, and there may be dessert, and then some history as well. So I just, you know, it's not a focus on the alcohol, as I said. The tours are quite extensive, and they're not inexpensive as well. So it's going to be a specific clientele, and there's quite a variety of tours options as well. And so I definitely encourage it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Welcome.
Thank you, Tim Unger, Plaza Street. I wanted to ask about pricing, curious about the pricing model and the cost per rider. I'd like to know what the maximum weight this vehicle can carry. I'd like to know, are the brakes mechanical, or are they electronic assist? And is it only the driver or the operator that controls the braking mechanism? And as a side comment, I want to say about, I won't say how many years ago, but I was at a bachelor party in Las Vegas, we wrote on one of these things, and it was a blast, absolute blast.
Hey, anyone else like to speak? We're going to be closing public comment. Last call for any input on this new business proposal. All right, so I'm going to close public comment, and move it back to the council to discuss this proposal. So who would like to begin?
Shouldn't we get answers to some of the questions?
Oh, that's true, there were some questions. Thank you, Councilwoman Gold. All right, so do we have a specific weight for this vehicle? How much can it take? Do you know how much weight this...
It can carry 14 people plus the driver. Some bikes also have people, like a tour operator in the middle, for instance, in between the seats, there's a floor, so they can walk around, so, I don't know, I've seen some waivers from other cities saying no one over, you know, 350 pounds or something outrageous, simply because of the seats are small, they're bike seats, but it can hold a lot of weight, it's 1,200 pounds.
So if it's a bike seat, I mean, it literally is, I'm just looking, so it literally is a bike seat?
It's a bike seat with seat belts and a seat back.
Okay, so it does have seat belts?
In the back, which you can't see, but there's a bench in the back where two people could sit.
Okay, and then what about the braking? Is it something that is mechanical, I think the question?
Mechanical brakes. We have a, sort of like a car brake with fluids, and I think we have a backup brake, which is like a motorcycle emergency brake. So we have two brake systems, and the riders don't control the brake, only the driver.
And are the seat belts required?
We could adopt any policy, but by the state law, I just think they're required to be provided, probably similar to a bus with seat belts.
And how about helmets?
Helmets we can offer. I believe most similar businesses, under 21 is kind of required for that. And we do have $2 million liability insurance.
Okay, were there any other questions that I may have missed? I think I...
There's one, Rosie, I asked the same exact question you asked earlier, maybe you're outside or something, and Lieutenant Jenkins said that if it's less than six passengers, it's a whole different set of rules.
She had told us that it was operating illegally, actually, because there wasn't a resolution, and they just didn't enforce it. We know she's no longer operating, I don't know if that's as a result of that, but we spoke to her, and she's selling her bikes, so.
Actually, I talked to her this morning, and she's not selling her bikes.
She changed her mind.
She's looking for a place to put them. In town, I did talk to her, because I was researching this, but thank you, I'm glad you're talking to her, that's good, because you guys have that in common. What was your...
Cost.
Yeah.
You talk about cost.
Expensive, inexpensive, four-hour tours, what are we looking at?
Yeah, so we're going to have an exercise tour in the morning, about an hour long, that's going to be anywhere from $15 to $20, including a coffee, which is great, it's really just going to be riding the bike. The other tours, you know, it can go anywhere from $100 a tour for progressive lunch, for instance. We're still finalizing our prices, because we're doing everything upfront per person, all-inclusive, so we're working with the restaurants to see what kind of pricing we can get. I imagine the dinner one would be the most expensive, we're going to Barton Diva, Bravas, places like that. Yep. I think we'll have more inexpensive tours on Mondays and Tuesdays, and maybe we'll do some kind of local rides or something when it's less busy.
Okay. I think that was it, I think, for questions from the audience, anyway. Thank you. All right, so back to the council, who would like to begin discussion of any kind regarding the proposal for this Bike Healdsburg business?
So I'm sorry, Mayor, I just want to get clarity on the question that was brought up regarding the previous pedicab, if you could cite the code.
Yeah, so it's under 21 to 15 of the vehicle code, it refers to that a pedicab defined as another section, which is 647.5C, which will be subject to everything we're talking about tonight. And 467.5C defines the pedicabs that we're talking about that require an ordinance or resolution to operate, is a four-wheel device primarily or exclusively pedal-powered, has a seating capacity of eight or more passengers, cannot travel in excess of 15 miles an hour, and is being used for transporting passengers for hire, so.
So to clarify, eight or more, and so the Healdsburg pedicab that was operating was not illegal at all? It was absolutely legal for her to be? Okay. Thank you for that clarification, City Manager. Okay, back to the dais, would anyone like to begin the discussion or commentary on the proposed Bike Healdsburg?
Yeah, I'll start.
Councilwoman Gold.
So I don't really buy that this will do anything about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, because the area that it covers is area that's easily walkable or pedalable on a normal bicycle, so I don't see it adding unless it adds by holding back traffic and creating more gas emissions that way. But I don't really see it as being a reducer of greenhouse gas emissions, that argument doesn't fly with me. I could see that it would provide another really fun activity for visitors, especially wedding parties, they're always looking for fun stuff to do in a group, and I can see that they would enjoy that. I can certainly see that businesses would be happy to have a vehicle like this pull up in front of their store, or their tasting room, or the restaurant, obviously, it'll be good for those businesses that participate. But I think that ultimately, it could have a negative effect on tourism for Healdsburg, because we have a... We offer a certain experience. People come to Healdsburg for the beautiful scenery, for the opportunities to taste fantastic wines and have great dining experiences, but also to experience this nice, pretty old town in the middle of a rural area. And I think it needs to continue to feel like a real, genuine town and a real community. And once this bike goes by playing music and people are partying on it, all of a sudden it's going to feel like wine country theme park, and I think it'll turn off a lot of visitors, and could, you know, it could break the future, but it could ultimately have a more of a detrimental effect. Beyond that, I don't think the residents are going to care for it at all. They'll be... They won't get any direct benefit from it, but they'll be held back when they're trying to get somewhere and drive through their town, and now they're stuck behind a vehicle, it's... They can't, it's not like a normal bicycle, they can't easily move around it, and it only goes about five miles an hour, so that's going to be a source of irritation. I think the sound will be a source of the irritation for the people who live on the streets that the bike goes down regularly. Obviously, we got a lot of letters of support, mainly from businesses who are in favor of it. I don't think it's really on the radar of the residents, and I think that once it is on the radar of the residents, we're going to hear a lot of very negative feedback. So I don't think it's a good fit for the community, and I can't support a resolution to permit it, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to go? Yeah, Councilman Yocas.
Sure. I guess, first, before I jump in, a clarifying question about process and safety. What, I mean, do we have, what kind of, well, safety issues might we be exposed to as a city, as far as like, if someone does fall off, without asking for specific legal recommendations? I'm nervous about what, you know, what, sure, there's liability policy, but...
So the state statute requires $1 million of liability coverage. I think that the operator said that they would have $2 million of liability coverage. My guess would be that... My guess would be that there would be some sort of indemnity provision, I'm not quite sure what the instrument would be, that would require indemnity by the operator of the city. That being said, here's my caveat, it would depend on the circumstances of the mishap as to who was liable, but certainly it would seem if it was of someone falling off of a pedicab, it would not be the city.
So we could require some sort of indemnity claw, agreement with, with the business?
At this point, there is no requirement. That would be determined in the resolution on the requirements that we set forth if we chose to, to let the business proceed. Oh, okay.
A follow-up on that, if our roads are not, like, I took the whole route today on my bike and I was just curious, so if some of the roads are not smooth and it's the city's road, it still doesn't mean that we're responsible for that? So if they take a toss on it, it's not like the city can get sued for that, even though we have people suing us for sidewalks and, and other falls in the city?
We'd have to evaluate that claim as it came in. I also want to add one thing that came up earlier, I don't remember which council member mentioned it, it was about helmets, there was an issue, there was a question about helmets and seat belts, and the operator said that seat belts are required but aren't required to be worn. The state statutes do allow the council to impose regulations in addition to what the state requires.
And then my, my second clarifying question was about, you know, what, let's say worst-case scenario, it, it just, it's just not a good idea, something, whatever happens, and what are, what do we have, what, what mechanisms could we have, can we, can we require to revisit and say, okay, let's, let's come back in six months and review it and make, make some proposed recommendations or changes to the, to our...
With it being a resolution, it can come back before you with another resolution to either rescind this one or modify their conditions to operate.
And that would be brought up by the staff if, if we were really seeing some horrible things in the, in the community?
Yeah, it'd be, the council could direct staff to come back or, I mean, any number of ways can get back.
Good enough, okay, thanks. So with that, a lot of things. First of all, you know, as far as the alcohol is concerned, to me, it's, it's almost with as, as a vehicle that where you could actually consume alcohol on it, to me, it'd be a rolling, rolling tasting room. And so we, I've already kind of specified, you know, we've set some pretty firm rules about where we, you know, where we have these tasting rooms within the city. So I think to me, it's like, it's just a non, it's a, it's a non-starter, the alcohol question, if just for that, forget any sort of qualitative arguments, right? Noise concerns me. I, I know that, that the vehicular code says 50 feet, but you know, that's 50 feet of someone who's driving 25 miles an hour. When you're driving 5 miles an hour, that's for a lot longer, you have to listen to those feet, right? So I'd be inclined to look at, to look at some greater restriction of decibels, if not, you know what, I actually would be fine with no amplified, you know, music or, you know, sound, audio at all. But, you know, as far as those, yeah, I, I share your, Councilwoman Gold's, sort of looking for cynicism about the greenhouse gas argument, it doesn't fly with me either for the same reasons. But I think, you know, to me, it's one of these, look, if, the, the impacts are, as long as we can mitigate those or address those, the issues of alcohol and noise, there's another, there's, there will be an impact of, of traffic. I think they'll, it'll cause some traffic to go slow, and I think I'd like to see some more, some more focus about what those operating, what those rush hour times are and perhaps some, a better plan around that and addressing those, those, those traffic constraint issues as, as they evolve. But I mean, you know, to me, it's, 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 first of all, I'm hesitant to, to say no to a business unless, unless there are real tangible negative impacts. And so as long as we can mitigate those negative impacts, I'm inclined to just let it go on those grounds, but beyond that, I think that, you know, having activities that really do kind of refocus our mindset on the bike and human-powered transportation as a way of, of connecting with each other. You know, look, these, these people are going to be sitting, you know, 10, 10 folks around a, around each other, looking at each other square in the face, you know, as you're kind of walking, you know, driving around or riding around, you know, experiencing the, the town on that, on that level, I, great, I wish we could have more intimate kinds of, of businesses like that. So with those, with my, with my aforementioned caveats, I'd be supportive of a resolution that, that addresses those and those concerns and allows for the business.
So to be clear, what are your reservations again?
So no alcohol, no amplified music or severely limited beyond the 50 decimal, right? 50 feet, sorry. Maybe a decimal level at the source, I don't know, but, but I'd be inclined just to keep it simple and no amplified music. And then I think the, the, oh, you know, so, so addressing some of the safety concerns, maybe having some sort of inclusion of, you know, seatbelt rules. And then I'd like to have a better, a better evaluation of the traffic impact and maybe a better process of reviewing those traffic impacts in, in the, in the resolution. For example, maybe expanding the definition of rush hour.
Thank you, Councilman.
I think I'm kind of in, in a similar camp as Joe. I think that the, I think that the business should be given a shot, but since they're using the, the public right of way as their, for driving around, and I think the, I think the rolling tasting room argument is a valid one. But I think that the routes that they're looking at and the, and the, that they're thinking about the times of day and about working with traffic patterns, I think that that's a good thing, so. But the amplified music and, and alcohol portion, I wouldn't support.
Okay. Vice Mayor Higley?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for at least submitting and, you know, proposing a, an out-of-the-box type business for Hillsburg. I do have a lot of the same concerns, you know, with regard to traffic, you know, I think this is one, you love it if you're on it and you hate it if you're behind it kind of thing in the neighborhoods, and that, to me, would be a concern just from, you know, with anything, we've got to look to see, okay, what is the benefit to the community? That is what we should lead with. Alcohol, I, I'm in agreement, I don't think alcohol is appropriate for this vehicle. I'll just leave it at that. I think, you know, the last thing I want is for this to turn into some wild, party-type bike. I like the health aspects of it, I like the, the local tour, I like the fact that it's doing, you know, it's bringing people to the local businesses. At the same time, if you go back to that map, none of those businesses are so far that you can't walk to, but I, I get the experience of being able to, you know, Lori and I do progressive dinners and we walk them around downtown, we'll have appetizers one place or drinks and then dinner and then dessert somewhere else, and that's the best part about Hillsburg, and I like that this does kind of expand that out and get a bigger group involved and, you know, kind of spread the, spread the love, so to speak. Noise, I'm, I agree with Councilmember Neokis about the noise, I think it's, it's small enough that you'd be able to talk while you're on, you know, if you're giving tours, if there's somebody that can stand in the middle, I don't think the amplification is necessary. I just don't want it to turn into like a Star Tours type of thing where you have down in Hollywood or these other places where an open top bus is driving around, because we are a real town. People live here, some of the routes, I pick up my daughter from, from school on Fitch Street down there where, you know, kind of the historic district, and I know that traffic is a problem down there during pickup and drop-off. The cost, you know, that's one area that, I like the, the coffee and the training kind of, I, I think that's something that is local focused and I could see that being something that, you know, is kind of an alternative to going to the gym and, you know, I, I think it'd be a fun thing you could get if you get a bunch of real athletic people, you know, go around Fitch Mountain if they, I mean, I'm not going to suggest that, but, but I do have concerns about the $100 per person when you're looking at some of these tours, and if this is something that the council as a whole says, yeah, we're going to allow this, I would hope that there's more geared toward locals, because that is important that this is, you know, I, I like the idea of working with the, the Hillsburg Museum and somehow getting, you know, families involved and helping, you know, the, maybe the kids' classes, if they, you know, do well on their tests, then this is kind of a reward, go to Wicked Slush or, you know, some fun, local-focused things. So my, I'm fine with the bike itself, but not the alcohol and not the sound. And I, I would agree, I think there's got to be some kind of a trial period just to see, because I think Councilmember Gold's concerns are real. I think once it's driving around town, we're going to hear some feedback, whether it's positive or negative, and I think that's where it falls on the applicant to make sure that the, the feedback that we're hearing is positive, it is, you know, locals are included, and that's, those are kind of my thoughts.
Yeah, I just want to commend you both for coming forward with a plan that obviously is not, hasn't been done before here. I, I remember going back east, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, I've seen these, I've, I've seen them on the streets in Boston, they're not as small as this, actually a little bigger, but, but the thing that, that stands out for me is the barrel, so just symbolically, the barrel on the end there, and again, again, the connotation of a tasting room. And the hard work that this city council has worked on to get alcohol as an issue that we want to address in our downtown core. Our last meeting, which was really intense, hearing from people that want to talk about no longer doing downtown hotels, because they feel like our downtown is being compromised by too many tourists, and then we have this question of livability, and, and there's just so many values that this council, I know, is going to be talking about in March regarding livability and how do we share our downtown with our guests, because we need our guests and we know that our tourism is important to us. But I also daily, and it's painful, encounter people about the roundabout and the traffic in this town and the parking and, and the issues of the tourism kind of coming in and, there's just so much going on and it's messy and I, I just, I'm concerned about the impacts of traffic. I did take the, the trip, I, I started from the, I took it on my bike today and I went every single direction trying to figure out what it would feel like to have it going down the streets, and the areas that I was most concerned about were the historic districts, because I know people that live on Tucker that are really concerned about maintaining itself as a historic district and to have music and, and I don't care how historically significant it is, it'd be nice for them to be on their feet, but, you know, I understand that the value of history and, and making sure that we get senior citizens on a bicycle seat strapped in, but I still find it to be not the most comfortable way for a senior to be traveling around the town. I just, I, I really view this as an issue of inconsistency with our recent policy decisions around alcohol use. So I share the concern about alcohol, I share the concern about safety, and I share the concern about noise. I really, really just openly have to say, it's a spectacle, it's, 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 you know, it's got that barrel on the front and it looks like it's a bar on wheels, and I think that's probably okay in some places, but I don't know about every single one of these streets that you've mapped out, and I appreciate you've tried to stay away from some of the streets that are more narrow, because that's what I do as a cyclist, I try to stay off the, the narrow ones. So I, I think my deepest concern is that we have come so far with alcohol policy and to come back and to go back and create another way for people to come to our town and celebrate it drinking. So could this be physical activity? Could this be really about the environment and letting people just get on it and not drink at all, but actually just ride around town and enjoy quiet or the sounds of a small town? That would be interesting to me, rather than needing noise and amplification. So, I mean, I guess I, I don't support this at all in terms of the way it's being presented. I don't know how to monitor a business once you give permission to it. So for example, you can say, yeah, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, but what sells in this town? Even our farmer's market decided to sell alcohol because they needed to get people to come, they thought they sell wine, bring them in. Alcohol will be an attractive part of this, to get people on it. I mean, the coffee sounds good too in the morning to me, but I would just argue that it just, to me, it's hard to manage it, once we, what we, once we permitted it, it would seem like you'd have a hard time saying, well, don't do it just for wedding parties, even though wedding parties are the most lucrative way to sell these, I mean, that's what I understand, maybe you'd have a different angle on it, which I think you're suggesting you would. The party's coming on wheels toward us, I don't know, I just have a problem with that. So if there was some way to mon, monitor that, the way the business actually does do its business in terms of parties versus education or a serene way to look at our city, I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm nervous about not vetting this more with the locals, and I don't think we advertise this at all or let people know about it in a way that maybe was helpful to the town that lived, the people that live here. So my gut feeling is that I can't support it, because I don't think that it's, it's going to really be something that adds to the livability of the town as much as it's going to maybe contribute to some of the issues that we're trying to combat, which is a little less about the alcohol and a little bit more about the people, and if there's any alcohol at all, I'm thinking it's going to, it's going to be a factor. So I don't support it as an alcoholic beverage source, I don't want it to be serving alcohol and I don't want the, the amplification. I'm not against the idea of it in terms of it being a wonderful option, but to transport people, but the wine barrel, I'm sorry, it's just, it's too, it's just, it's the front because it's, it's what it is, it's a bar on wheels, and I'm concerned about that as an image that I want right now with where we are in our city. So I guess I don't support the proposal as it is. So that's, that's what I have to say about that. As mayor, I'm supposed to come forward now and see if I have any support, is there anyone that wants to add anything?
So if I could just add, add one thing, Madam Mayor, so I just talked to the, the city attorney, go ahead.
I, I want to hedge a bit on something I said earlier, about if the council decides in a year that the business isn't working, and Councilmember Neokis brought this up, what do you do? And I, I agreed that you could simply rescind the reso. I'd want to actually research that a bit, I'd be somewhat, I'd want to research that a bit. This is kind of an odd procedure because of the way that it's delineated in the vehicle code, and so it's a little different than regular vesting arguments, and so I would want to research that a bit before telling you for certain that we could simply by action of the council and no action or inaction by the applicant or the operator rescind the reso and shut down the business.
How about expanding the business? Once a resolution's in place, if they decide they want to, if it's successful for them and they want to have, you know, eight or 12 of these a day and maybe get some more of them, a small fleet, would, would we have any control over that?
It would depend on how you structured your, whatever you do to, whatever your authorizing legislation is, a reso ordinance, whatever you do, it would depend on how you structured that. You, I, I don't see a problem offhand with limiting them, regardless of whether it's still one company or in, in, in general.
So, so that being said, I want to go down the consistencies, which I heard from the council. So it sounds like there's two councilmembers which are not supportive of moving this forward, period. The rest of the, the remaining three councilmembers are not supportive of alcohol, they're not supportive of music, they are concerned about the actual route and the impacts of traffic. So that's, that's where the consensus seems to be, unless that just, based on what the city attorney just mentioned, changes, changes anything. Is that consistent with where we are?
I guess the only thing, my only question would be, just to continue that, that line of thought, the city attorney, is there some way of like having some kind of licensing program? Is there some way of like having some kind of licensing program that says you have up, you can operate up to four pedicabs or something like this?
Yes, we could certainly look into a licensing, a licensing program.
So that's what I would, so that I would, that would, that would be my, I'd add that to my list is to, is to ask you guys, ask staff to come back with some sort of a licensing recommendation.
Okay, so does this council support as it is alcoholic beverages and the music? That's the thing that I think we need to clarify before we move forward. I mean, that's, there was, okay, so just clarifying that. So those two things for sure, this council does not want to see on the pedicab. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so full, okay, so those two things. And then the other thing, of course, is just looking at traffic, there was concern. So what would you like to propose or do you have any ideas of what you want to seek?
So I, I think the applicant heard you. What I would suggest is we have the applicant work with staff to resubmit what their, um, they, what they believe with, again, we, we don't want, they have a business plan, they have to make this business work. So I would suggest that we ask them, um, not right now, but to come back to staff and explain to them what, um, after we heard council, what the concerns are, how they're going to address those concerns. And that would be in the actual resolution. Cause it sounds like there's three right now to come back with no alcohol, no music, but to have, um, an, an, an adjusted route, if you will, which will address the traffic concerns. If they're, so that's the first piece. If there is consistency, excuse me, consensus, um, to come back with a licensing program, that's going to take a little bit more time and effort. I know the applicants would like to get this moving, quick, moving forward as quickly as possible. If we do want to go down a licensing path, I would imagine this being at least a month, month and a half before we'd be able to get back to council because we are dark the first meeting of April. Um, but I would think this would probably be at least two months before we get this back to council if we're looking at a comprehensive licensing program for pedicabs.
Okay, so at this point, I think we're just going to leave it as is. We're not taking any action on this then?
Well, no, the question, the question is, do we want to move forward? Do we want to move forward with, um, allowing the pedicab to operate without alcohol, without music and to address their, um, traffic plan? If that is the case, we would return with the resolution with the amended traffic plan, if you will, at a, at probably the next council meeting. If the intent is to create a more comprehensive licensing program that includes their operation, that's going to take much more time, is my point.
I have another question. So if, if we go ahead and permit this and, um, the business begins operating and we get a lot of protests from the public, people are upset about it. What are our options then? Can we revoke based on, on, on that or is that, that seems a bit unfair to the applicant?
That's what I want to look into. I, um, I, I know that there's, I, I want to look into it.
Thank you.
So, so we would bring, whatever action we break, bring back with, we would have that clarified in the resolution and the staff report. So council, before they act, would understand what the revocation, revocation process would be. So we wouldn't bring back an action until we had clarity about what the city attorney is, is pointing out.
If there's a light, if we have a codified licensing program, I would expect that it would also include a procedure for revocation, procedure and standards for revocation. And that's going to take time.
Okay. Vice Mayor Higley?
I just wanted to clarify something you said. So what you're suggesting is, is that the applicant take our comments, go back and come back to us. But in the meantime, they are not allowed to start operating within town, correct? You seem to imply like they could operate.
No, no, they, they cannot operate until the count, until, until we bring a resolution back to you for adoption. And so that's regardless of what happens tonight. I saw what I'm suggesting is if there is consensus, um, to move forward without alcohol, we can bring that back at a, relatively soon, we're going to ask them to amend their traffic patterns. And in the meantime, we'll get a clarification from the city attorney about the revocation process for this one resolution. Not a licensing program. If council's desire is to, is to start a licensing program, that's a much, a much more comprehensive approach that will take time.
Just a point of clarification. So what do you mean by amend their traffic patterns? Where are they going to amend it to? What, what would be?
That would be a question for the applicant.
But I mean, what, what have we given them to give them an understanding of what they'd have to change in order to support our concerns? Do we have, do we just want to wait for the chief to give that information? Or should we be more explicit so we can help them to understand traffic patterns aren't working?
Well, I, I think, um, my personal opinion is, you know, I made the comment about, um, you know, school hours on Fitch Street and the traffic issues there. So maybe there's something specific addressing, okay, in the green zones, these are the specific times. And, you know, maybe there's more defined times of when the tours are going to be, that sort of thing.
Okay, are there any other issues? To help them understand that, because I just don't know what other modifications.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not a traffic expert or anything, and I don't think any of us up here are. I think that that would be a better question for staff. I support, um, the applicants coming back with an amended traffic plan after they've met with staff and, and bring something to us that, that makes, um, makes us more comfortable with this. And I, I, I'm hesitant to, to start on some sort of licensing program on something that we haven't even really, I mean, this is one thing. So, um, I'm okay with, with, with them being able to operate, um, after they've spoken to staff and come back. I think that's a reasonable thing.
Okay, so any other comments before we?
Just, just really briefly, I think, uh, uh, my, my only concern with the licensing is, you know, again, if, if there's some sort of a revocation process that, that work that we can all be comfortable with, if, if things go south, that's, that's my, that's my real concern about licensing, right? So, um, um, so, so that's, I'm happy with that. Uh, and my only clarification on the traffic is, is, you know, yeah, we, we're not the experts. And not only that, we, there might be some unknowns that we don't know. So I would like to see some sort of a, of a process for revisiting whatever traffic mitigations that, that, and maybe let's review it after a period of certain months, um, as, as part of their plan.
I don't know. I mean, I think maybe we're, we're making it more complicated than it is. Um, I mean, we had a pedicab company operating here for a couple of years and, um, they were, you know, close to six feet wide and they moved at five to 10 miles an hour and I didn't have any problem with them. Um, so like from that standpoint, I think I'm okay. But I think from, like, I think it's pretty clear that the alcohol and noise thing is not so okay with us. So, um, I would just like to give them a shot.
So I think, I think the revocation, the, um, question will be answered in the staff report. So again, when we come back with this, we'll have clarity in the revocation process. And if it is as it appears, simple revocation of the existing resolution and nothing is, is vested, then I believe that satisfies council. If in fact we come back and it looks like there is some vesting, I can't think of another term right now, but there is some vesting in their rights, then we want to have that laid out in the staff report. And at that point, council may change their mind and want to go down a licensing program, which would, if that is the will of the council, which would then prolong the process.
Okay, thank you. So what's it, what, what we're processing now is just, we're going to go ahead and leave?
I have, I have clear direction to move forward. Um, because of the, because of the traffic, um, adjustments, it might be another meeting or two before we get back to council.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for coming forward and being willing to try something new in town and stay tuned. Okay, thank you. All right, so with that in mind, we move on to item C, which is the network upgrade. And this is to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Development Group, Inc. For the purchase and implementation of information technology related to a network upgrade in an amount not to exceed 512,0127.54, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, authorizing change orders up to 10% of the original contract amount and amending the information services FY, um, 2017, 18 budget by $153,805. So I think that would be you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and council members. Heather I. Paletti, Assistant City Manager, and with me is the city's new IT manager, Adam McKenna. Before you tonight is the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Development Group, Inc. For the purchase and implementation of information technology related to a network upgrade in an amount not to exceed $512,127, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, authorizing change orders up to 10% of the original contract amount and amending the information services fund fiscal year 1718 budget by $153,805. Little bit of background, many changes have occurred in the information technology division of the city over the last year. The city has entered into an agreement with Portola Systems, um, for technology support services directly related to the city hall. The seasoned coordinator vacated her position in August. The city hired Laura Tradenik as the interim information systems manager to assess the overall performance of the division. The city then upgraded the coordinator position to a manager position. And we've got Adam. And just one month ago, the council authorized upgrading the current techno technician to a specialist and authorized hiring an additional specialist for which the recruitment is in process. The city's actions since August moved the city in a direction to rely less on outside consultants and more on our, our current employees. Since coming on board, Mr. McKenna has reviewed the city's network infrastructure and found aged infrastructure still in service beyond its useful life and at risk of failing. While some of the infrastructure was scheduled for replacement with the city hall addition and alteration project, staff is finding it important to look at the overall network and execute a more comprehensive plan. While some of the information, the equipment was originally proposed for the city hall addition and alteration project, that, the, the equipment proposed was going to require the continued use of outside services. And therefore the city decided to terminate the agreement with Portola Services for that city hall alterations project and look at going in a different direction. The city did already enter into an agreement with Development Group for the remaining work on city hall to bring it, um, ready for the city hall move in March, um, actually later on this month and get it ready for void. At this point, with that background, um, complete, I'm going to turn it over to Adam for essentially a state of the network and discuss more about the details, what we have proposed.
Good evening. So I thought I'd start with a little bit of background on what a network is. Um, I know, um, some people have more experience with technology, others have less. So a, a simple definition of a network is, a network is made up of interconnected network equipment, which is specific hardware and software, and is a method of providing connectivity and communications between technology devices and other computing systems. Communications occurs through digitized signals sent over the network to facilitate data transmission and resource sharing among a wide range of users and systems. Some examples of our, what our network does is that it provides access to programs and applications such as our financial software and permitting system, allows for various forms of communication such as email and voice-based phone calls to traverse our network, allows for research and information gathering and sharing, and delivers critical services such as phones, credit card processing, printing, data storage and backups to computers and staff. So the current state of our network is, um, of high interest here. Approximately 40, we, we use approximately 40 critical network devices to maintain our network, 75% of which are older than seven years, 50% are over 12 years. IT has very limited visibility into the state of the network, making support difficult and planning impossible. No strategic design or configuration changes, um, have been leveraged to modernize the network in at least 10 years. Network security concerns need to be taken into consideration. Um, and this plan would allow the city to adapt best to, in a real time, to real time improvements, um, as they are made. So that being said, IT recommends that we update our network and equipment and design, uh, excuse me, we update our network and network commit out of design, out of, design out of operational necessity to ensure business continuity, enhance our network security, increase IT productivity and additional natural disaster resiliency. Now in defining what we wanted to do with our network, we came up with some business objectives. First of all, we wanted to minimize the overall cost and the dependencies on outside vendors. We wanted to only offer solution architectures that can be sustained and managed by the current planned IT department staffing levels while always protecting and optimizing the end user experience and offer only technology architectures and solutions that have been proven and tested and contribute to the city's operational objectives. Now some additional reasons why we might want to do this. IT would gain visibility and fact-based data regarding network operations that allows it to make tactical and strategic decisions. We would minimize the number of applications that must be maintained and supported to operate a mission-critical network. We would simplify the network management to maximize staffing resources while retaining security and enterprise quality of service. And we would stabilize network, remove bottlenecks and increase the maximum throughput to support modern technology needs and system efficiencies. So we went through a bid process. We requested proposals from multiple vendors. Um, DGI was the only vendor to successfully provide a proposal meeting the needs of the city. DGI's proposal, proposal utilizes CMAS California multiple award schedules to ensure that every product has already been through a standardized bidding process. Absolutely.
The CMAS process is that piggybacking process. So essentially the, the federal government has already gone out, done the bids and the state adopts that. And what we're doing is, is using that CMAS, that California municipal award schedule to, to, instead of doing our own bits.
So our proposal includes specific items to city hall. Critical network hardware and software necessary to upgrade the security of city hall's data center and provide business services to, um, the facility. Proposal services include detailed strategic design, configuration, install, turn up and go live. I do want to point out that this is a wired network and indoor wireless upgrade. So things like our server environment are, and our data storage are not included as part of this. They are equipment that is housed in our data center though. Citywide upgrades would include replacement and upgrade of all citywide wired networking equipment, including upgrading to a minimum of one or 10 gigabit network hardware standards, indoor wireless network infrastructure for all sites and select equipment per high availability design needs or redundancy at city hall and the police department. Proposal again includes complete ground up evaluation, redesign and optimization of the citywide network configurations for voice and video and general optimization of standard network services. In addition, IT gains, um, multiple management platforms, approximately 14 independent tools, independent but necessary tools to, to manage, management tools wrapped into a single cloud-based and managed application. This alone reduces the need for additional, at least two physical servers and 14 virtual servers, hardware and manpower to maintain just network management within the city. All of the above items include 10 years of advanced replacement support, licensing upgrades, security patches and new features. Additionally, this upgrade removes the need for an estimated 80,000 annually of vendor-based network support. In addition, this upgrade includes enterprise mobile device management, which was an already, um, an option we were already looking at within IT. Um, open DNS, boundary network security and cloud lock access, security broker, security software to, to begin our enhancement process of our security systems. So we have some options. So option A is the Cisco Meraki option that we're, um, recommending. It's a 10-year plan. We have a Cisco non-Meraki option. We currently use Cisco and a non-Meraki, non-Meraki hardware. And so, um, it made sense to look at what enhancement would look like using that equipment as well. And then we could also do nothing. Um, that being said, if we do nothing, we will still have to upgrade hardware, um, over the course of 10 years. So if we look at the pricing, um, our proposal, five, approximately 512,000. Um, with the option B, we're still looking at approximately 300,000 in hardware and about 200,000 in software. Um, the 300,000 includes additional on-premise server needs to house the software that would have to stay on site. If we, um, do nothing, over the course of 10 years, we'll still spend about $300,000 on hardware. And because we're purchasing at one-off, we will actually be spending more money as we move forward. Uh, we would not be purchasing software because we'd be, um, not necessarily doing any enhancements. We'd just be maintaining. In addition to that, there's the licensing factors involved for hardware and software. Included in option A, the 512,000, we have the license, licensing included. Um, for the Cisco non-Meraki option B, we're estimating probably conservatively about 30,000 a year or 300,000 for the, the 10-year period. Currently, we are spending about 22,000 every year on licensing for the hardware we have today. So over 10 years, that's about 220,000. In addition to that, we have to consider how we're going to maintain these platforms. With the option A, it's been designed for the current staff to maintain the system. With the option A, it's been designed for the current staff to maintain the system. We do estimate that we will need a small amount of support on a regular, on a yearly basis to do advanced maintenance, but those numbers are in the realm of ten to twenty thousand per year versus option B, which, knowing we want to bring this in-house, we would recommend hiring a network engineer, inclusive of benefits and other HR costs. We would estimate that's about a hundred and seventy thousand per year, or one point seven million over the course of ten years. And if we do nothing, we would recommend that we continue using outsourced IT firms to assist with the management of the systems, which would put us about one point three million plus project costs over the course of ten years. And finally, impact to the city on both option A and B would be significantly positive and positive. Both options give us great solutions for our network and a lot of flexibility. The option A, of course, gives us much more control in-house and a lot of additional ability without outsourcing those needs. Option C, however, has both a fiscal and a usability negative aspect, and we would probably end up over time with frustrated staff. In addition to that, we want to take in disaster and natural disaster planning. Both options A and B have been designed with multiple contingencies, while option C would continue what we've been doing thus far. So, to expand on impact, with the option A, it allows IT to stop firefighting, shift focus to proactivity, and move to a position of strategic partnership with the other city departments. IT has visibility and fact-based data regarding network operations to allow to make tactical and strategic decisions, act quickly to secure and secure our network, and increase customer support. We would be able to minimize the number of network applications and associated hardware that must be maintained and supported to operate a mission-critical network, simplify the network management to maximize staffing resources while increasing security and enterprise quality of service, stabilize network, move bottlenecks, increase maximum throughput to support modern technology needs and system efficiencies, and finally, minimize potential for critical systems and service downtimes, including during natural disasters. However, if we went with the option to continue doing what we've been doing or do nothing, we can expect a continuously increasing number of network events that cause staff downtime, lower or stop productivity, and many critical components could stop the entire city at any point in time. We would be spending significantly more money on hardware and support with no strategy or design behind it. And finally, created, we would be creating an environment that is less supportable, less secureable, causes greater frustration, and costs more money. So, we've designed a, we wanted to summarize the matrix we just looked at. Again, we're recommending option A, however, there is a B option and a C, which is do nothing. So, if we summarize all the dollars, we end up with one point eight million for doing nothing over the course of ten years. With option B, we're about two point five million. And with option A, including the support that would be spread out over ten years, we're at seven hundred and twelve thousand. If you've been doing the math, that's a three and a half times increase for option B and a two point five increase for option C. The total cost for this proposal is five hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-seven fifty-four cents.
Back to me. The fiscal impact of the five hundred and twelve, the Cisco capital program offers a thirty-six-month financing program without interest. The first year would cost about five, one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The contract will be funded through Information Services Fund. The Information Services Fund is an internal service fund funded with service fees from all users. As proposed, the estimated June thirtieth of eighteen ending working capital will be reduced by the one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight to about six hundred and twelve thousand. And what we're also is proposing a contingency of ten percent because as Development Group Inc. gets into the network, we're concerned that they might find something that's unanticipated, but the ten percent will cover that. And again, the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Development Group Inc. for the purchase and implementation of the technology related to the network upgrade in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars fifty-four cents, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, authorizing change orders up to ten percent of the original contract amount, and amending the budget by one hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, thank you. All right, welcome to Heelsburg and to the network.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so questions from fellow council members?
Yeah, I was just wondering what, how this impacts the general fund, and how our spending from the general fund in the past on network infrastructure costs, how is that changing from last fiscal year to this fiscal year?
This is an upgrade of the, of the network. And so, we have not, like Adam mentioned, we haven't spent a lot of money on the network, and this is like the routers and the switches and stuff. This isn't the servers, this isn't the desktops. We haven't spent a lot of money on our network. But what we have been spending money on is for an outside consulting company to do the management of our network. And that, that contract I brought to council in December, and I only extended it through June thirtieth, and I promised council that I would come back with an option that would reduce our reliance on outside consultants. We were paying over, at a minimum, a month of over seven thousand a month just for the management of the network and with concerns about, of the lack of duplicated services. So, when one part fails, we're down. This, this contract also includes wireless technology for our internet and allows us to have duplicative internet service and fail-safe, this is what I'll call. So, getting back to your question, in some ways, it's, it's more expensive, but in some ways, because we can do the over three years, my guess is there'll be actually very limited impact to the other funds, and what it'll do is, instead of paying, Portola Systems will be paying this one hundred and fifty-three thousand instead for that, for that management cost. So, the general fund contributes some money to the internal service fund, but my guess is there will be no, will not see an increase because of this contract to the, to the internal service fund service fees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions? Okay. Councilman Niokus.
Sure, thanks. First of all, kudos on taking a very complex topic and boiling it down to something that that's really kind of hits the points. I think it was really, really well done. Do we have some, some questions still? So, first, what, can you give us some examples of the visibility to data that you mentioned?
Sure, so, we would have the ability to see if, down to even the cable level in the wall, if we, if we are having, if the end user's having a challenge with their connectivity to the internet, we could also see if we could, we could get some data about how many people are connecting to a particular wireless access point. We can see what in type of device is connected across town to part of our network, and we get a lot of flexibility about how we define that network, how we use security protocols to allow or disallow use of the network.
So, so theoretically, after, if we go ahead with this, after a period of time, you could actually come back to us and say, here's some, this, this is some interesting data.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. After, so you've, we're defining the scope of ten years, but option, but option B is really, that's where we're, we're actually purchasing the equipment. So, after ten years, we'll still own that equipment.
Sure, but after ten years, we would need to be...
It's pretty much dead.
Yeah, exactly.
It's kind of replaced anyways, your point.
Absolutely.
And then, why, did you specifically go, so, option A and B is Cisco. Did you, were there any other options that you explored?
I've, over my years of experience in IT, Cisco tends to be the most robust platform from a longevity standpoint, but also from the ability to maximize the network potential and usability for the end users. We, I've found that the, the hardware is designed for environments of our size as well as, it gives us the flexibility as we grow in scale.
Yeah. And then finally, you know what, one thing that I found interesting about the option C that's not included is the, the opportunity cost that's, that would be lost.
Correct.
Or the, the staff, essentially, essentially staff downtime.
Correct.
If you're, if the whole city's down for half an hour, well, that's a lot of productivity lost, and that's, that's not even included in that.
Correct, correct.
So, I just want to point that out. Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the dais? No? I just wondered if there was any kind of an assessment factor for staff downtime in the last year. Do we ever look at that? Because I know I've come in to pay my bill, and I know as a teacher, if the, if the computer's down in San Rosy schools, it's actually kind of nice. Let me just tell you, because I know I can then talk to people and say, I don't just do everything like this. So, I'm just wondering if we sometimes can just keep in perspective that just because the computer's down doesn't mean we still can't do things? And I'm just, I know that may sound ignorant, perhaps even naive, but I just was curious if this city does function without a network sometimes.
The city, the city does not function without a network, I can promise you that. A lot of our softwares are cloud-based at this point, and that goes from a lot of our utility billing functions as well as our financial software, and a lot of work we do is, is, is just through Outlook and email, and our customers as well. And I will tell you, there was about one week that we experienced most of our city staff except for CDC and city hall, so all of the other locations. I'm talking community center, corp yard, wastewater treatment plant, senior center. The PD was up because they do have some redundancy. Right now, we don't have any redundancy with our internet, and so right now, our internet comes into city hall, it is then shot up via radios up to the top of a hill, and then distributed to the different facilities. Well, with the server, server move, server room move, we actually lost a couple of those radios. And for a week, all of the facilities except for city hall and the CDC and the, and the PD were down, and it was, it was not a good week around, around this place. And I will say that what we're doing is, we're building a redundancy with this network so that we will never have one of those weeks. And it's, we talk about employee morale and, and having some employees up and some employees down and not access to be able to do their work is not good for employee morale. So, this city does not function well without their network up.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to open this to the public. Public comment on this recommended action to approve an agreement with Development Group Inc. for the purchase of this information technology network upgrade. Does anyone have any comments from the public?
So, just up for clarification, I was curious as to, so is this a hundred percent onsite NAC, or are we doing any kind of remote management at all? I also think tracking performance over time in terms of network downtime and loss efficiency and whether or not you're incurring more or less expense is going to prove whether or not the decision was right in hindsight, might be a good thing to do. And Cisco is definitely the Cadillac out there. You know, Meraki was acquired by Cisco, it's good, you know, good gear, but Cisco is definitely the best.
Thank you. So, any other public comments?
I had representatives from NAC, Development, the only group is here if there's any questions.
Okay, so, at this point, may we ask those two questions, or can we get those two questions answered?
Of course.
Okay, excuse me, I need to close public comment first, but I didn't know if they needed to come up and still answer questions, so I was just leaving that open. We can still have public comment open, and we can ask questions to...
Well, I was just suggesting that if there's any questions for the consulting team, they're here as well.
Okay, all right, so, at this point, I can close public comment, but we're still going to allow Development Group Inc. to answer questions from the audience if they want to come up to the podium. How's that? Okay, so, council members, if you want to ask a question to Development Group Inc., let us know. In the meanwhile, maybe answer that question, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to let Adam answer the cloud-based question.
Sure. So, I probably could ask further probing questions, however, the, our data center is one hundred percent on-prem. Part of the design of this network actually would be to allow a split data center between here and the police department, which helps build the resiliency and redundancy of our network. And I hope that answers that part of the question. Oh, and yes, reporting is a huge part of this, and that's one of the things we're lacking in IT right now, is the ability to understand the data that we can't see.
And just to comment, what I feel is lacking in IT in my system is continuity of staff, so I'm hoping that that stays true, because it's nice when you get a new program to have the same people there to kind of move it forward, so just thought I'd bring that up. All right, any questions for Development Group Inc. or any other comments on this dais regarding this proposal? Okay.
Seeing no other comments, I'll offer resolution approving an agreement with Development Group Incorporated for the purchase of and implementation of information technology related to a network upgrade in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twelve thousand dollar, five hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, authorizing change orders up to ten percent of the original contract amount, and amending, amending the Information Services Fund fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen budget by one hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars.
Second.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Niokus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Higley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for joining the team, and again, thank you for...
Thank you, happy to be here.
Yeah, yeah, we, we need Cisco, we need Development Group Inc. to do their job and get this right, okay? So, stay with us, all right? We need you, and thank you for coming forward and being there, present the whole meeting so that you could witness city action as well as process. It's good to see you, gentlemen, we should have asked a good question for you. All right, moving on to written communications, quarterly update from Corazon, anyway, community services director gave us a good input, and so did the planning and building director DeRosa regarding planning commission actions. We are now on line to number eleven, which is, we are now going to adjourn to a closed session, and it's regarding conference with legal counsel. I think, actually, were we going to do the council reports before? Okay, all right, sorry, everybody, changed it up here. All right, we did move to the end, council reports on matters of interest, and I apologize, so yeah, we're moving on to that, and I would love for someone to begin. McCaffrey?
Councilmember Niokus and I attended the animal shelter, give-me-shelter benefit up at the villa, it was a wonderful event, honoring such big supporters of the animal shelter as Rodney Strong and his, his family, John and Kim Lloyd, and others that, I mean, they really support that, and it's a great group, it's a, it's a great event, I encourage you, they have it every year, go up there and check it out. I ended up getting a few auction items and spending some cash for the animals, and it's all for a good cost.
Just a few brief things, first of all, I attended the Family Justice Center breakfast in Santa Rosa. Wow, I, you know, I actually had no idea what the Family Justice Center was all about, and it's, what an amazing play, organization for one-stop social services for, for folks who are, you know, feeling family distress. So, it was a gem of the community, that, one of those, those new things that I learn every so often. Also, attended the Russian River Water Association Board, Board Meeting where we adopted a work plan, and then the Senior Advisory Committee where they, they contemplated some, some recommendations that they're going to be bringing forward to us about transportation, recommendations. So, I'm excited, I'll be excited to bring that, as you know, to the dais, so, that's it, thanks.
Vice Mayor Higley?
I've got a couple of things. I also attended that Family Justice Center, and, you know, they typically announce, oh, Mayor so-and-so, Vice Mayor, the council member, so they skipped over Heelsburg, and I joked around with Councilmember Niokus, is that every time we go to those, they always mispronounce our names. So, maybe they just decided to skip saying our last names. On Thursday the twenty-second, Councilmember Gold and I attended the ribbon cutting with the Chamber of three new businesses down close to the roundabout, Grape Seed Twist, which is where the former Heelsburg Doghouse location was, and then Thrive Hydroponics, which is behind Sonoma Cider. And so, it was great to be a part of that. I also attended the Sonoma County Tourism Ambassador Lunch out at Soda Rock Winery on behalf of Heelsburg, and that's really about it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I did a few things. One thing I did on Saturday for eleven hours is judge the Miss Sonoma County Pageant, which was really intense. But anyway, Tony Girardi is happy with me. I met with Director Crowley regarding greenhouse, Read Across America at the kindergarten class, met with the ESTAP meeting over at the senior center, and the homeless shelter issue came up when I met with Mike Johnson, the CEO of Cots, for lunch, actually, with Councilwoman Gold. So, with that, I would like to move on to the, to the adjournment for a closed session, please, for the city council. Yes. So, this closed session is a conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, and it's regarding significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. There are three separate cases.
Okay, this is Mayor Mansell reporting out from the special meeting. The city denies the government claims, all presented against the city by the following claimants, Diana Sanabria, Richard Peacock, and Cafe Lucia. All claims seek money damages from the city for losses alleged to have occurred due to recent construction. This meeting is adjourned.